Good morning, County Council. I'd now like to call to order this council meeting of March 27, 2025. And at this point in time, if you're able, please stand and join us in singing "O Go Canada."
Good morning, County Council. I'd now like to call to order this council-
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Councillor Mackie sends his regrets today, Councillor McKay, Councillor Carlton, Councillor Pringle, Councillor McQueen, we are expecting later this morning, Councillor Nielsen, Councillor Patterson, Councillor Dickert, Councillor Kentner, Councillor Keveney, Councillor Body, Councillor Gregg, Councillor Milne-
Present.
Councillor Dobrine, Warden Mattressopps-
President.
Councillor Bordingham-
Present.
Uh, Councillor Eccles sends his regrets today, Alternate Councillor Doug Hutchinson, and Councillor Hutchinson.
Right.
Um, and I'll note that Councillor McQueen has joined us, so we have all members and attendants today with the exception of Councillors Mackie and Eccles.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this point in time, let us begin by respectfully acknowledging that we are gathering on the traditional territory of the Inishanabik Nation, the people of the Three Fires, known as the Ojibwe, Odawa, and Potawatomi Nations. And further, we give thanks to the Chipewas of Sogin and the Chipewas of Nawash, known collectively as the Sogin-Ojibwe Nation, the traditional keepers of these lands and waters since time immemorial. To our south lies the traditional territories of the Six Nations of the Grand River. We are dedicated to honoring Indigenous history and culture and committed to moving forward in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and friendship with all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples. At this point in time, I'd like to make a call for any declarations of interest. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the adoption of the minutes. The first set of minutes that we have is 6A, item 6A. It is recommended that the minutes of county council meeting and committee, the whole meeting dated March 13, 2025, and the resolutions contained therein be adopted as presented. May ask for a mover and a seconder. Okay, uh, moved by Councillor Hutchinson and seconded by Councillor Dickert. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any, then I'll call that vote. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. Uh, next, we will move on to long, long-term care committee, uh, minutes, item 6B. It's recommended that the closed session, uh, closed session committee, the whole meeting minutes dated March, uh, March 13, 2025, and the closed session long-term care committee of management meeting minutes stated March 20, 2025 be adopted as provided. Moved by Councillor Keveney, seconded by Councillor Patterson. Any discussion? Yes, Councillor Gregg.
Uh, just wondered, I don't believe the chair, chair's here, I think Chair Mackie, so question, I guess, to staff. But I'm pleased to see that the write-off balance this year is zero dollars, as outlined, because there has been a recent trend in recent years of, uh, write-off, uh, amounts, uh, not trending a good direction. So zero is great, but could staff comment a bit more on, uh, what those tax write-offs, um, amount to, how they come about? Um, right now, we're in the middle of a federal election, and, uh, while everyone is professing to reduce revenues and taxes, nobody is saying what they're going to cut, uh, to pay for that. So revenues coming into the corporation are still very valuable. So glad to see it's zero. Just wondered, uh, what we've changed to, uh, curb that.
Okay, so Councillor Gregg, I believe the question that you have for discussion will be suitable for item 6C when it comes on. At this point in time, we're just doing 6B, which is the closed session minutes. Yeah, so, so, uh, hold that thought. And, and I will, once I can get 6C moved and seconded and on the floor, I will look to, uh, um, Director Cornell to provide it. So at this point in time, we're only discussing item 6B, which is the closed session minutes as received. Okay. Not seeing a hands for discussion on that note. All those in favor? And that is carried. Now we will move on to item 6C, and it's recommended that the Long-Term Care Committee of Management Minutes dated March 20, 2025 be adopted as presented, and the following resolutions contained therein be endorsed. That the report LTCRCM-0325 regarding a long-term care director update be received for information, and that the long-term care operational report dated December 15, 2024 to February 20, 14, 2025 be received for information. That the report LTCRCM-0525 regarding Rockwood Terrace resident life improvement operating budget be received, and that staff be directed to proceed with the donor's request to purchase fresh flowers each week until the, the donation amount of 10,000 has been fully utilized. And that report LTCRCM-0624 entitled 2024 Long-Term Care Write-Off of Uncollectible Amounts be received, and that the recommended write-offs in the amount of zero dollars, as outlined in the report, be approved. May ask for a mover or a seconder to get that on the floor. Uh, thank you. I'll take, uh, Councillor Carlton and Councillor McKay as seconder. Thank you. So it's now on the floor for discussion, and I will look to Director Cornell to lead us off in that. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, and good morning, uh, County Council. Um, I ca- I was prepared to give just a little bit of an overview of the meeting. If that's still the wishes, I can do that, and then I'll make sure that I get to your, uh, question, Councillor Gregg. So, um, as the warden has indicated, uh, lots, there was lots of items happening in the meeting, lots of discussion. In the director's update, just some items to highlight. Uh, an, an overview of ministry updates, including the launch of a dementia care sector preparedness initiative, which the three homes have participated in. Uh, and this is really promising. Uh, we're really pleased to be a part of this work. Uh, it's, it signifies the province's, uh, commitment to improving services for individuals living with dementia. And so we were really pleased to be part of that work. Um, also, updates regarding, uh, a few different items around funding, which align with what we were expecting for, uh, and what we budgeted for. Uh, a little bit of a highlight about the polling stations that were available in each of the three homes for allowing residents to have easy and equitable access to voting in the provincial election. And we're expecting calls imminently to set the same up for the upcoming federal election. We had a virtual family call last evening that went, uh, really well, and thanks to Rob, uh, Hatton for his support with that. I also wanted to highlight the partnership with Nipissing University, um, BSCN students, and a partnership with the Centre for Learning, Research, and Innovation in Long-Term Care, and a partnership with RNAO, uh, clinical best practice pathways. So lots of work in moving forward our quality initiatives. Uh, we also had a presentation from Stephanie Matos, the student placement coordinator, presenting our Color at Coach mentorship initiative, and that's a partnership that we've done with CLRI. And, uh, I'm, I'm really, really proud of the work that is happening in the homes, and we have been asked to present that program at the upcoming Advantage Convention. So, um, if you have a chance to go look and click on those links in the slide deck that is attached, there's a video that is really worth watching. It's, um, Color at Coaches that are frontline team members who have put their hand up to say they would support students, and a couple of really great stats. We, the three homes have supported over 170 student placements and 29,000 hours of student placement, uh, which is really great, I think. Uh, moving on to the operational report, again, highlight, a couple of things to highlight. Uh, we are tran- the province is transitioning to the INTERRI, LTCF Resident Assessment Instrument. And, uh, this is replacing the current MDS system, so the system that we use to document, uh, that translates into our funding. And the, the, all of the long-term care homes in Ontario must implement the new INTERRI program by the end of this year. And so it sounds easy, although I don't really think it does. It doesn't even sound easy. Uh, so it's a lot of work. It's, uh, it's a worthwhile investment, though it allows us to have more timely, uh, funding based on the residents that currently live in the home as opposed to 18 months ago. But it's a huge endeavor where everyone will require training and the implementation of, uh, of a new system. It does align with the clinical pathways, though, so that's promising. Uh, we also had a summary of the inspection reports and critical incidents, projects, events, and a little bit of more information about our emergency management plan. The life improvement, uh, report that Karen Kraus brought is, it's a really lovely report, and, uh, uh, family members have made an investment and a donation to the, to Rockwood Terrace to have fresh flowers every week in honor of their parent. And so, um, thank you to that, that family. And then finally, the write-off, uh, of uncollectible accounts. So to answer your question, um, Councillor Gregg, the way the, so the, the way the system works is that, um, every year long-term care operators can report to the Ministry of Long-Term Care uncollectible amounts and will receive 50% back, uh, from the province. Uh, as you noted, uh, we did not have to submit any, uh, this year. There are zero, uh, accounts that are deemed uncollectible. And that is in part by ongoing efforts of our partners in finance, the administrative staff in each of the homes, the social worker program, supporting residents and families as early on as possible to sort out the complexities that is moving into long-term care and their finances. And so that has played a role. The other, um, change that has happened in the last year or so is that Public Guardian and Trustee, which is a provincial body that supports residents who don't have a substitute decision-maker to support them with their finances, is getting a bit ahead of their waitlist. So we're, we're starting to see some movement in Public Guardian and Trustee being able to support, um, payments getting made and in place, where there has been some backlog in that, where if it's two or three years behind, we have to decide, are we writing this off, or are we waiting another three or four years for it to catch up? So that's starting to catch up, and that's making an improvement. Does that, I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Thank you very much. It's good to have that extra information. Just one follow-up question. The additional administrative work, uh, that goes on then at your level, is that something that's just, you know, you're able to incorporate, or have we staffed up to be able to, um, achieve that of better collection in the last few years? Uh, I guess the best example is, are we spending $30,000 more to, to generate 10,000 back?
Thanks. That's a good question. And no, it's really more about streamlining the processes, uh, having them aligned across the three homes, having some more structure, uh, templated letters, uh, a little bit of a pathway. So we're able to better identify earlier on that things might be going off track, and then set up meetings and, and start building support. Uh, we also have social work at Lee Manor, for example. Our social worker has been there for a few years. So they've, they've gotten, uh, into, uh, a, a process and a routine where they're better able to kind of identify that, those kind of situations a little bit earlier. Uh, the province also increased some funding for roles like social work. So, uh, we have been able to increase social work fully funded by the province at Gray Gables, um, an extra day. And Rockwood has two days a week of social work as well. So those combined help us just be more on top of it.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Okay, um, I would like to, thank you very much, uh, Director Cornell, for talking about how it really was a part of good news and celebrations, the fact that what we're doing here is, is, uh, people are looking to see that model expressed across Ontario and what can be done. And on that note, uh, the CAO Windgrove and I, we would like to do an additional highlight.
Thanks and good morning, Council. And I, I just wanted to, uh, let everyone know this was shared at the, at the committee meeting. Um, Advantage Ontario is the organization that represents, um, all of the municipal long-term care homes in the, in the province. And, uh, Jennifer has been, uh, recently, uh, acclaimed as the chair of, of that board, which I think is, is a wonderful connection for us and speaks to, uh, the highest esteem of Jen's health in the sector. So we're very fortunate and congratulations, Jen.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And, uh, indeed, that is a celebration of the advancement of your leadership. Uh, with that, I don't see any further hands, so we have it moved and seconded. It's on the floor, so I'll call the vote. All those in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. Item seven, we do not have any closed meeting matters, nor do we have any item eight reports. That allows us to move on to the bylaws, and we have a few bylaws to consider here. It's recommended that bylaw 522525 and 522725 be introduced and be taken as read first, second, and third time, finally passed, signed by the warden and the clerk, sealed with the seal of the corporation and engrossed in the bylaw book. Three items. Number one, a bylaw to appoint a chief administrative officer for the County of Gray. Number two, a bylaw to appoint an acting deputy clerk for the County of Gray. And number three, a bylaw to confirm all actions and proceedings of council. May ask for a mover and a seconder. Thank you. Moved by Councillor Gregg, seconded by Councillor Hutchinson. First one. And, uh, with that, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. News and celebrations. I've got four things that we are going to highlight on our list before we reopen it to the council members' floors. The first one I'm going to call up is for our SOS, our Support of Outreach Services, and OShare. So I'll look to Director McNabb for that.
Good morning, Warden and County Council. I'm pleased to have, uh, Colleen Trastee with me as well here today. Uh, she's the executive director, uh, from OShare. I just want to bring up my, uh, station here. Okay, we're happy to be here today to celebrate with OShare. They've been, uh, one of the original partners of SOS since 2021. But, uh, this month, we're, uh, marking a one-year celebration that we've been on their side of their facility to offer our outreach markets. For OShare, what it means to the community, they provide, uh, two meals a day, every day. And even, uh, when not open on Sunday, they provide meals on Sunday, uh, for individuals in the community that need, uh, sport. They have a school lunch program, uh, used by schools and parents, as well as, uh, a family meal program where they, uh, do, uh, fresh fruit, or fresh vegetables, fruit, casseroles, and, uh, lunch supplies given to families. They have the good, uh, Grey Brews Food Share, where they rescue, uh, food from, uh, local grocery stores, and they redistribute that throughout the community. Uh, last year, 375,000 pounds, uh, were rescued and, and used. And they also do 160 good food boxes a month, uh, to make sure individuals that normally wouldn't get fresh vegetables, that they do that each month. For, for what they mean with us, with SOS, uh, again, this four-year partnership, uh, Colleen, she's with us every two weeks. We meet and, uh, a contributing partner to the team. Uh, we, uh, have our market held, excuse me, uh, every other Wednesday, uh, in Owen Sound at OShare. So what that means is people coming in to get their food can get the Support of, Support of Outreach Services. The family market there is where we support families of, uh, of, uh, community members with, uh, mental health and addictions. And, uh, whenever we need it, uh, we've been in some situations and emergencies in the last minute where we need food. And it's, she's, I, I remember one morning, we called her at five o'clock in the morning. We had breakfast by seven, uh, for a, a bunch of people that were evacuated. Uh, she's there for us to provide food for emergencies as well. So really happy and, uh, so much needed her support to make the work that we do possible. Uh, just a bit of, uh, OShare by the numbers. 139,719 community meals, uh, 30,000 or 30,000 school lunches, uh, over, uh, 35,000 family meals. And, uh, what they do is, uh, they, every, uh, market that we run, they provide the meal for it. It's generally pizza or something like that, but not only do they provide it in Owen Sound, they actually provide it in Hannover as well. And that's really that first relationship building where we can give somebody a lunch, and then they can come meet with us and start to talk and build a relationship. So over 212,000 meals in 2024. And to make all this happen, they have seven staff and 140 volunteers. And, uh, if you ever are looking to help, it's a lot of fun actually to be there and help out. So, uh, yeah, if you're ever, I'm sure Colleen's always looking for a volunteer to come help. And, uh, this is something that's really been exciting for us, um, you know, offering medical care in, in just sitting at a table. It's not really all that, uh, it's not, uh, the best ideal spot. Uh, what, uh, Colleen's been able to do in her facility now is she's, uh, developed this, uh, community, uh, uh, room where we have the community health space, uh, with some donations from the Owen Sound Family Health Team. Uh, it, it's really just a community, a clinic. So we have an exam table. We have others, washroom facilities there. There's a sink to clean up. There's a place for documenting and charting and to, uh, provide care. So, uh, we use that, uh, with our market every other week. And now we have, uh, a physician there and a nurse and a social navigator every Friday. And our goal is to increase those supports there to have and drop in mental health care downtown. And then also hopefully someday is getting, uh, nursing there for wound care, which is so badly needed in the community. So overall, we just wanted to say thank you, Colleen and OShare. She means so much to us. Like, uh, sometimes we get ahead of ourselves too, and we sometimes volunteer for stuff without talking to her, without knowing it. But, uh, she's always been so receptive and great with us, and, uh, she's always gonna be a better community partner to be with. So, thank you, Colleen.
Well, thank you so much. It is such an honor to be here today. Um, I was on the founding board of OShare in 2013, and I can honestly say that we thought that 60 meals a day would probably be about what we would do. Um, I remember sitting around a board table and talking about maybe we'd get to 100 someday. We definitely never thought that we would be serving 25,000 meals a month, or that we would be having a room in our facility where, um, amazing nurses, paramedics, mental health professionals, a nurse practitioner, and a doctor come together to serve our community. Um, we never thought that we would be a part of an incredible team of partners, serving our community through SOS and FAM. But we did believe in collaboration and partnership, and we believed that what we had, we would share, and this included our resource and our space. When the Hanover outbreak happened and we were asked to help with meals, the collaboration that began then between service partners from all sectors was incredible to watch and be a part of. And I want to thank Gray County staff and leadership, because it truly was your leadership and support that brought us all to the table to help during such a time of uncertainty. And your incredible staff have continued to support us at OShare and encourage us to where we are today. We're humbled to be a small part of an incredible team of professionals from so many different services who choose to come together in a true spirit of collaboration to care for our neighbors. It is truly a testament to the power and work that can happen when everyone is invited to the table to bring their experiences, their expertise, and their resources, working together for our community. At the last SOS market, I took note, there, we had 19 different programs and services, all working together in a thousand square feet of space. And in two hours, we supported 207 unique- And in two hours, we supported two hundred and seven unique individuals. At our last FAM market, in two hours, we had nine programs and services working together to support sixteen families, which represent twenty-six unique individuals and forty-three unique children in our community. Talk about harnessing the power of collaboration, partnership and resources. So who's O-Share in all of this? Well, we're the hosts. We open our doors for the incredible work of our partners, and we welcome people with a warm slice of pizza or a muffin and a hot cup of coffee and a smile. We have a staff-led, volunteer-driven organization, and we have the best volunteers who truly are the hands and heart of our charity. Every meal that we share is paid for by the incredible generosity of small businesses, community groups, churches, families and individuals from our community. We believe in collaboration. We believe in the amazing work of our partners. And we believe that for our community to thrive, everyone needs to be cared for and valued. And so we do that one meal at a time. Thank you again for having us today and for your leadership and for including us at your table.
Okay, thank you very much. And I see that you have a presentation to make, and we have a photographer right up behind you there. So did you want to organize that? And on that note, I would now like to invite Francesca Doughton from the United Way to come forward.
That one, got it. All right. Um so Warden, County Councilor's staff. Um the United, I'm Francesca. I'm the executive director of the United Way. And the United Way was honored to nominate Kevin McNabb, who knows nothing about this, for his outstanding leadership and innovative contributions in addressing the opioid crisis and providing critical supports to homeless individuals and those experiencing substance use disorders. Kevin's unique approach was defined, has redefined paramedic services emphasizing compassion, collaboration and creativity, as seen, to solve complex social health challenges. Kevin will humbly bluster that he was never alone in all of this, and he was never alone in the creation of the SOS program. But it was his determination to save lives that inspired all of us to follow him with blind faith that this could be done. Under Kevin's visionary leadership, the SOS team pioneered a groundbreaking approach that blends emergency response with long-term support systems. Recognizing the growing intersection of homelessness and substance use disorders, the SOS Collaborative designed an innovative approach that integrates paramedic care with social services, mental health supports and addiction recovery programs. The initiative has become a model for communities seeking holistic solution that prioritized the long-term recovery and wellbeing over crisis management. Under the SOS program under Kevin's leadership has not only saved lives, but built a more compassionate and responsive system that empowers those most affected by the opioid crisis. Uh through his tireless dedication, Kevin has demonstrated that innovation and paramedic services can truly transform communities and create lasting change. It is for this reason that the United Way versus Gray nominated Kevin McNabb for the King Charles III Coronation Medal in recognition of his exceptional leadership, creativity and unwavering commitment to support the most vulnerable. And I have that medal to present to him today.
Indeed, I think our surprise was a success. Excellent. Thank you very much. And thank you to the United Way for putting forth that wonderful recommendation. With that now, uh we will go on to item, uh we we have another item from the Business Enterprise Center regarding the summer company. Come on up. Good morning, Ms. Catalin.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Lynette Catalin. I am the Business Enterprise Coordinator with the Gray County Business Enterprise Center. We help small businesses get set up and grow out of the City Hall campus. Um and I'm here this morning to talk for a few minutes about our summer company program, which is live right now. Um the tagline for this program is Work for the Best Boss Ever This Summer, you. Um this is a student entrepreneur program. It is for students age fifteen to twenty-nine. And it gives them all kinds of cool things. So the way this program works, it's funded by the provincial government, and it's administered by the Small Business Enterprise Centers across the county. So we have funding for eight student positions over the summer. Um successful students get a three thousand dollar grant towards running their business. Lots of business training, mentorship support. Um we work really closely with Bruce County, with Business to Bruce on this. So um our students end up with a really good network of fellow student entrepreneurs to work with, which is fantastic. It works really well. And I guess I just want to present this to you so that we can get the word out to as many students as possible. Because I'm in all the high schools and I'm working with, you know, the business classes and the entrepreneurship classes, and that's amazing. Um but I also need to be reaching the students that are in the woodworking classes and who want to start agricultural-based businesses or who maybe are good photographers. Like, you know, there, it's so broad and it's applicable to so many kids that are beyond maybe the accounting class, right? So the more people that know about it, um the better this program is. So some of our past participants, um these are from a few years, last year and a few years before. We've had students in so many different sectors. This is literally just the smallest snapshot. Um we've had uh coaching and training programs. We've had service-based businesses like aesthetics, nails. Um we've had some agricultural-based businesses. Students have used funding to start a flock that they bring to market in the fall, which is amazing. We've had photographers. We get the typical landscaping, cleaning, exterior, you know, exterior services, that kind of thing. Um but the point of this program and what I often say to the students is bring me your idea, and if there's any way that we can make it happen, we will, right? Um we can be a little creative. We can offer all the supports. It's what we do there. Uh so really, it's just getting the word out and making sure that all of our municipalities know about this. And, you know, students across Gray have the opportunity to participate. Um a couple of different ways to apply. They can reach out to us directly at the center. They can apply directly through the survey. Um the process is, I'm not going to say it's easy, but we make it as simple as possible. Um students have to put together a business plan. Um we put them through some training, making sure they have all the tools that they need, and then we support them through the summer. And that is it. That is it for me. Like I said, we do try to make sure that we have um students represented from as many of the municipalities as possible. But that really means making sure that we're out and reaching all the municipalities so that nobody opportunity.
I, we do have a question over here from Counselor McKay.
Yeah, uh I'd just like to say thank you very much. My granddaughter did the nails part of it, and the business is really thriving. And she's making enough money to help herself out that her grandpa doesn't have to do some fundraising to send her off to college. So uh she is doing good. So I'd like to thank you very much on behalf of the McKay family.
Lovely.
Excellent. And exciting to hear about how, what the um the individuals do participate, what they do with those investments and how it helps them in the next stage of their life. Uh any other questions? You have provided us with your contacts, so we can, we can direct people to contact you afterwards. I see a question from Counselor Dobree.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs, and good morning, County Council guests. I was just wondering if your information or a program has been sent to all of the clerks of the municipalities so that it can also get on to our individual local agendas? We can pull that in and then further, further elaborate on your behalf.
Thank you, Counselor Dobree. Um I have not done that, but I will. That's a good, um yeah, this has been very good for some creative ways um of getting information out. So yes, I absolutely will do that.
And Counselor McKay, thank you for that. Brooke was amazing in the program. And all of our students last year, I don't know that this has ever happened, continued running their businesses through the year and are picking them up again this summer, which, I mean, that is absolutely best case scenario. So, you know, Brooke was terrific, and I'm glad that she got something out of it.
Excellent. And looking around the room and on the screen, I don't see any further questions. So thank you very much for that update. And we have a fourth item too, uh on the note of student creativity, youth and young adults doing, taking the charge and leadership. I'd like to call up Ms. Miles to give us an update in terms of the Youth Climate Action Fund and some exciting updates to share with your communities. Here we go.
Um yes, I have the privilege of being on the Town of Blue Mountains Youth Climate Action Fund project team. Um and so I've been working to support the staff at the Town of Blue Mountains um to promote the second round of the Youth Climate Action Fund. Um so as you probably heard about, um in the press release, we have a hundred thousand US dollars to distribute in micro grants of up to seven thousand dollars to support youth climate action. So um we've been busy over the last few weeks trying to get the word out to as many youth as possible. Um we've hosted a number of youth events. Last week, there was a guest speaker at Georgian Bay Community School in Meaford. Um and then last week, I also co-hosted a workshop at Saint Mary's in Owen Sound, um where we tried to really support the students in brainstorming, sharing them about um the Town of Blue Mountains future story, as well as going green and gray, get the ideas going. And really, the key message here is that we want to hear their ideas and we're here to help. We also shared about summer company as well, um because there is definitely some very entrepreneurial ideas that came forward. So we just really wanted to make sure that youth know that we're here to support them, um and there's lots of resources available. Um we're excited to announce that the deadline has been extended from March thirty-first to April seventh. Um there's been a lot of snow days this winter, so that's um definitely, you know, posed its challenges in terms of getting the word out through schools. Um so deadlines, April seventh. More information, um you can find the link at gray.ca/climaction as well as the bluemountain.ca/ycaf. Um so if you know youth in your community that might be interested, um get them to reach out to Nick from TBM or myself. Um we'd be happy to connect the, help connect them with a sponsor organization or any other resources they might need to get going. Um and if your municipality hasn't done so already, we would also encourage you to share it through your communication channels. Um I believe Rob sent it out to all the municipal communicators, encouraging municipalities to share it. Um so definitely any help to promote the program. Um we want to get as much money distributed um across the county as possible um to help us implement climate action and going green and gray.
Thank you very much for that update, and it is exciting that um we are one in, one out of only five across Canada that have this opportunity to share, and that it's good for uh youth from fifteen and young adults up to twenty-four. So all of those Georgian College students you might know, or students you might know that have a connection here and may be away at school at the moment, but do have an idea that they'd like to work on while they're here is uh there is an incredible flexibility and opportunity, uh thanks to the 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 openness of the funders to appreciate the creativity that comes from young adults. So uh thank you very much for that update. Okay, so at that point in time, I can put now the call out to other news and celebrations from around the county table. We'll start with Counselor Boddy.
Uh thank you. I just note that uh Owen Sound or I guess Owen Sound received funding for the ghost busing. We had enough money saved over from the grants the last few years, plus the revenue that had come in to be able to operate. But we need the provincial approval to spend that money and not send it back to them. With the help from our newly-minted uh MPP, Paul Vickers, we're able to get that uh that approval this week to be able to continue to run the ghost service up and down Highway sixty-one well. So it's, it's good news. Thanks.
Excellent. It is good news. And with that, uh look around, we'll go to Counselor Cantner.
Thank you. And through you, Warden Matrasovs, um we we have a fortieth anniversary coming up in Meaford. And uh forty isn't that many years, but it is a lot of years for a bell choir. And we we have got at Knox, uh United, or at least Knox Presbyterian Church in Meaford, um a handbell uh organization, as I say, that have been making music for forty years, and they're putting on a concert Sunday, April thirteenth at two PM at Mission is By Donation. And there is a um another aspect to this, they were thirty-five back when COVID struck, and they had planned a concert and it fell through because of COVID. So uh we're really looking forward to celebrating this forty-year anniversary with them. And uh I just wanted to mention too, you'll find Knox Presbyterian Church right beside Georgian Bay Community School on Concession Road Seven in Meaford. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking around the table, looking on the screen. Okay, I think we've concluded our news and celebrations with the exception of CAO Wind Growth.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs. Um just a quick update for everyone. Um I think you're aware through a discussion that was held at the Community Services Committee um late last year that the county had made um application uh for some funding to undertake further assessment and analysis regarding the future of transit. Um we've entered into a collaborative project with Bruce County and Suffolk County, as well as SMART, the Soggy Mobility Group. And I was pleased to note, um on March eleventh, we received um approval in principle from the federal grant. Um so there are some funds coming to support that work of the group. And uh we're looking forward to hearing from the province about the OTIF application. But for now, things are moving forward in a positive direction. Um the first But for now, things are moving forward in a positive direction. Um, the first, uh, meeting of the project group is today. And, uh, this is a real first to have the two counties and an agency working together on this. So, you know, at the end of it, I'm that there's some really good information that's able to come back for everyone's benefit and future consideration. So thanks.
Thank you. So with that, then the last item that we need to do for council is a motion to adjourn. Take a mover from Counsel Patterson, seconded by Counsel Nielsen. All those in favor? Thank you. We will adjourn County Council and give a moment for IT to be set up for committee of the whole. Thank you very much. I'd now like to call to order this committee, the whole, uh, meeting of March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. And at first I will put out a call for any declarations of interest. Okay, seeing none, we will proceed. We have business arising from the minutes. However, uh, uh, Counselor Eccles is unable to attend this morning and it was a notice based on a notice of motion uh, that was raised by him. So we will defer the declaration of Agnes McPhail Day in Gray County. Uh, we did, uh, indeed, there were celebrations over the previous weekend and the actual birthday was March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. So there is an opportunity to work throughout the year towards what we might do, uh, do in addition next year. So we will defer that until Counselor Eccles can serve, uh, can, uh, move his notice of motion. Next, we'll move on to the delegations and we do have one and, uh, he will be participating virtually. And it is with regards to the Municipal Tax Equity Consultants, Mr. Freeze. Okay. Okay. So I've just been informed that actually we're going to tie that into the report, which I think will make a lot more sense in terms of our discussion. So we'll hold off on hearing that presentation from Mr. Freeze until we can hear from, uh, Director Spicer as well. That allows us to move on to determination of items requiring separate discussion, item five. And, uh, we have the consent agenda in front of us here. There is, there are four different items. So we will, um, Madam Kirk, do you want me to call out for? Okay, let's call out for the items first before we move the, the rest of the motion. Any items to pull from before? Uh, Counsel Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden. I'd like to pull six A, please.
Okay, thank you. Six A has been pulled. Any others? Okay, not seeing any further. So therefore we'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda that the following consent agenda items be received and that staff be authorized to take actions necessary to give effect to the recommendations in the staff reports and that correspondence be supported or received for information as recommended in the consent agenda. And we have pulled item six A, but then that includes the remaining items. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Uh, thank you. Moved by Deputy Warden Milne. And seconded by Counsel Nielsen. Any discussion? All those in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. So with that, we will proceed to item seven, which is our, uh, items for direction and discussion and we'll return to item six A at the end of our agenda. The first one that we have is the tax policy. So it is recommended seven A, it's recommended that FRCW oh five twenty-five regarding twenty twenty-five property tax policy be received and that County Council reduce the tax ratio for the multi-residential property tax class from one point two two zero six zero 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 to one point one one zero three zero zero, which is one quarter of the movement required to equalize the, the treatment of all residential classes. And that County, County Council adopt all other twenty twenty-five tax ratios and subclass reductions for the twenty twenty-five taxation. And that necessary bylaws be drafted for council's consideration and approval. May I ask for a mover? Moved by Counsel Dickert, seconder. Seconder is Counsel, uh, Hutchinson. The original. Okay. So, uh, it's now on the floor for discussions. So at this point in time, then, uh, welcome Director Spicer. You are there online with us along with Mr. Freeze. So, uh, Director Spicer, do you want to lead the intro and then, uh, bring on Mr. Freeze as you see fit?
Thank you. Good morning, Warden Matrasovs and County Council. I'm going to introduce Peter Freeze today. He's the Vice President of Policy and Consulting Services for Municipal Tax Equity Consultants. And, um, he's a consultant we've used for many, many years now. So he's well familiar with, uh, Gray County as well as other municipalities. Peter will present the twenty twenty-five property tax policy that's attached to my report and then he's going to take any questions. Once that's done, I'll follow up with my report and we'll respond to further questions. And with that, I'll turn it over to Peter.
Thank you, uh, Mary Lou. Good morning, uh, Warden and Council. I'm going to share my screen. And everybody see that? Okay. All right. I will proceed. Um, I will go through my presentation as efficiently as possible, but do not hesitate to ask me questions. Um, go back or elaborate on anything. Uh, twenty twenty-one, uh, in terms of what we're talking about, uh, we should be in a position where we were actually wrapping up the, the last, uh, reassessment cycle and starting a new one. Um, so we've, we, we're still on reassessment hold and we, we've actually bypassed an entire four-year cycle now. Um, so we're, we're, we're still in limbo on, on reassessment and, and taxing based on um, property value estimates set at January first, twenty sixteen. Uh, there are a couple of changes. That doesn't mean the rest of, uh, the system isn't changing as we move forward. Uh, we always have growth and contraction and, and changes that happen within the year that we have to look at before we consider, uh, before we send out tax bills every year. Um, and then we do have a nuance in terms of provincial policy. We have a new aggregate extraction class, uh, for certain properties that used to be in the industrial class. I'll talk about that. Um, and there's also a change. We have a new optional, um, subclass of new multi-residential. That's not really, doesn't have to be part of your twenty twenty-five decision-making because it doesn't apply to any current properties. But I'm just going to give you a little overview on, on that newly introduced optional subclass. So we have a number of influences, um, that alter the amount of tax the county raises and your, the local area municipalities raise and how it is shared, uh, reassessment, uh, when it's in effect redistributes the burden. It doesn't create any more or less, uh, property tax, but it changes who pays it. Um, growth, positive growth does change your revenue. It will add to your tax base capacity. Uh, true growth is true addition of taxable assessment. Uh, tax policy which rests with County Council. Uh, and we talk about tax policy, there are administrative policies, but here we're talking about what actually structures the levy, which would be tax ratios, tax class structure, subclass discounts. Um, again, tax policy doesn't affect how much money anybody you, you, you raise. It's where you're raising it from, how the balance of taxation amongst property classes and subclasses lies. We generally talk about tax policy as I just mentioned in, in terms of council's decision. But, uh, tax policy changes at the province, like the introduction of this new class will also affect the distribution of tax and we'll, we'll see it how that works in a moment. And then there's levy change, which is tied to your budget. That's, uh, where, you know, inflationary pressures and spending changes, uh, flow through. So we have to consider all of these influences separately, uh, understanding that we don't have any reassessment or phase in. Um, the first task is to create a, a baseline. Last year, you passed bylaws, your local area municipalities passed bylaws, you sent out tax bills. As soon as the rolls return for the year, things start to change mainly with, with growth. And we have to quantify that and understand what the growth means. During twenty twenty-four, before we can really understand what our decisions in twenty twenty-five will mean. So looking back over twenty twenty-four, uh, we had CVA growth in total of about two point five percent uh, or five hundred and five million. So this is new assessable property. Um, a nuance here is that we have the aggregate extraction class, which had no assessment. It didn't exist at the beginning of last year. There's twelve million dollars. That's not really new assessment. That is assessment that moved out of the industrial. This entire twelve thou, twelve million dollars was formerly classified for taxation purposes under industrial for twenty twenty-four. Um, the, uh, when we look at what that means for revenue, that means that the, uh, county and local area, uh, municipal levies changed during the year. The, uh, overall growth for the county levy, uh, went up two point seven five, uh, percent. That's two point seven five percent growth in, in real terms, um, on the capacity of your base, it translates to two million, uh, dollars in county, twenty twenty-four county levy. Um, some of that money would have been realized as, as it appears here, one year. Um, some of it would have gone back further. So the actual, what I call cash register dollars would have been different from this. At this point, for our purposes, talking about tax policy, this is a, this is a measurement of change capacity or increased capacity. Uh, were you to raise, you can raise this much more money this year than you started with last year at a zero percent levy change position. In a two-tier, it's really important to keep in mind that we share the assessment base with the local area municipalities. Um, when a new home or business comes online, that is county growth, it is also local growth. And again, uh, you know, growth, just, we don't want to get too much into the weeds on reassessment, but um, you know, this is, this contributes to growth and reassessment. What we're doing is we're kind of flipping from one time to another and, and, and looking at the house in the same condition. Um, that's not growth. This is what we're dealing with now. Just, we're taking past vacant land, we're subdividing it, we're adding improvements, assessable improvements, new taxpayers. And when we look at these numbers, um, we want to keep in mind, we'll revisit this, we talked about levy change, that this is supplied by new taxpayers or taxpayers that altered or improved their property. Existing taxpayers, um, that left their properties unaltered did not contribute any of this additional revenue. So we must restate every year. Um, there's always a little, even in the absence of reassessment. Uh, we had little nuanced restatements because of the special circumstances around Owen Sound. Um, this year we have the aggregate extraction class. As I said, that is assessment that was pulled out of industrial. Um, so it didn't really have a tax ratio last year, but those properties were, were, were subject to a tax ratio of one point eight three one by being part of the industrial class. Uh, as the new class, they were subject to a new transition ratio and a transition ratio is simply our starting ratio for the year. And whenever, uh, a new class is established, the province must set those or set a mechanism. The County of Gray's new aggregate extraction class ratio is eighteen point six three percent less than those properties were taxed at an industrial. Uh, this is a universal reduction. Every municipality's aggregate extraction regulated transition ratio uh, is eighteen point six three percent less than their industrial. So this is quite an intentional, um, cut for these properties. To give you a sense of what properties we're talking about, these are, uh, gravel pits and quarries. They may have been, uh, standalone properties or a portion of property. So some gravel pits, they were an entire roll number, they were IT. Now they are, they are, are, are aggregate extraction at a lower tax ratio. Some of them are components of larger properties or they have some other elements on them. This would capture those gravel pits and quarries. So essentially this is pulling those out and and reducing the tax on them, uh, on those properties. It's a provincial decision. Because we have to start with new ratios, that shifts tax. We looked at your twenty twenty-four as revised, which is your year end, including growth. We still rely on that number. However, with the new ratio for twenty twenty-five applied against the new rule, we are seeing inter-class shifts. These are not, um, dramatic shifts when we consider on, you know, seventy-five, seventy-six million dollars. Uh, we have a shift of seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars off of those aggregate extraction properties. And they get picked up by the remainder of the base at a rate of point zero two percent. So, uh, if you're a residential taxpayer, you're going to see, uh, you're going to pick up a shift of point zero two percent because of that provincial policy decision. It equates to, uh, nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars on residential. Um, it's, uh, just, just while we're talking about ratios before I, I go on. Just a quick reminder again, this isn't something we'll deal with in, in excruciating detail, but you'll notice the tables do show a subtotal for an Owen Sound requisition. Um, that is because Owen Sound is still, uh, has separate ratios. This has been a longstanding special regulated circumstance for them. The ratios have been moving over time. Um, there's a little movement, uh, seems every year. Uh, but when that requisition goes across, it's important to know that their share that goes to Owen Sound is calculated in the same way that every other local share. It's calculated using the county's chosen ratios. Uh, and then when Owen Sound takes that amount, there is some redistribution. But when the county levies taxes, even in Owen Sound, well, well, it's under special circumstances. Um, we're counting a residential property at a ratio of one, a farm property at a ratio of two point one eight, a you know, multi-res property at one point two two oh six. So, um, it's redistributed within Owen Sound, but the Owen Sound requisition is calculated in the exact same way of, as everything else. We dug into this in, in more detail last year, but I don't, you know, I, we didn't feel that was necessarily. Um, so there's the Owen Sound wrinkle and then there's the aggregate extraction, just to clarify again what this is. Um, this is a distinct class. It is subject to these new ratio limits. And if we want to take a look at sort of what it is overall, what's happened. Um, we had a circumstance last year where taxes were levied, everything was normal. These were all in, industrial taxes. Uh, when partway through the year, the province decided they wanted to provide a break to the gravel pit operators. Municipalities had already set their tax policy and rates. There wasn't much, um, they could do, it would be a little late in the year to do that. So they provided a reduction solely on the education side of the tax bill. Um, local municipalities had to issue credits to all the properties because they had already been billed. And that countywide was a hundred and seven thousand, almost a hundred and eight thousand dollar reduction for gravel pits last year, but funded solely by the provincial education portion. Municipalities gave nothing back in twenty twenty-four. That was a temporary subclass when they announced that they said it was temporary. Um, when we get our start tax this year with the new, um, you know, the, the new circumstances, then we are, uh, actually reducing the municipal portion by fifty thousand and the province, uh, clawed back their education reduction. So what they really did was they moved, um, a big portion of their education reduction and turned it into a municipal reduction. There's still a slight reduction on the education side, but not like it was last year. Um, and they've put the education backed up by, you know, sixty thousand dollars. So, you know, if we compare last year's starting position to this year's starting position, gravel pits net of education in municipal will pay fifty thousand dollars less than last year. Um, education taxes will be less than last year's starting point, but more than, more than they finally paid. What's the net, what's the impact of this? It is for the average residential property in Gray County, it's about seventy-five cents. So it is an administrative, um, uh, issue. It is, uh, sort of a, um, it's, it's an odd circumstance where we get these properties pulled out and a forced reduction put through. But in the end, it's not overly material, uh, to the taxpayers. So that's kind of what happens is that's, that's the starting point we're dealing with. We had growth, we had the aggregate extraction. We redistribute a bit based on, uh, you know, restating the Owen Sound a big, big year. Now we come to your decisions, which are municipal tax policy, uh, decisions. These rest with county council. Primary to this, and there are all sorts of decisions you can make, but decisions you have to make is what classes you're going to use and what tax ratios you are going to apply. You don't have to make an active decision on classes unless you want to collapse or adopt a new one. But ratios, you have to make that decision every year. What the tax ratios do? Well, they, they express the relationship in the tax rate between classes. So we have a, you know, as compared to residential, we have residential at one, if farm is a quarter of that, or in your case, point, you know, uh, 218 or we have, um, 218, sorry, and we have higher business class ratios. We're weighting up or down the assessment. We're really saying a, for every dollar of assessment for farm, it's worth a bit less. For every dollar of assessment for commercial, it's a bit more. And, and when we apply those weighting factors, it helps us redistribute the tax. So although, you know, the share of CVA in this really simple illustration, there's 70% on residential and 15 on, on farm and 15% on business. When we reweight the CVA using ratios, we, we alter those, we alter those relationships. Okay? For Gray County, this is how that falls out. We have our current value assessment by class. So res is 70, you know, four, almost 75. We apply our ratios. We have farm weighted down. We have managed forest weighted down and pipeline weighted down below one. Everything else is, is one or above. So it changes our share of tax. So our share of, of residential, it makes up 74% of the assessment. It carries approximately 82, 83% of the tax. To compensate for the, uh, you know, the weighting down of a farm and managed forest primarily. On the opposite side of that, we have industrial, which carries 2% of the, represents 2% of the CVA, but, uh, carries almost sorry, 1% of the CVA, it carries almost 2% of the tax. So that's the effect of your decisions around ratios. We are moving the tax burden around. We're shifting it. We're, we're, we're adjusting that. That being said, while those are your decisions, you're going to pass a bylaw, those decisions are made within fairly rigid provincial parameters. These are your 2024 starting ratios that we have already looked at. These are what we call the provincial ranges of flexibility. They used to be called the ranges of fairness. They changed that wording in the regulation recently. I think fairness had a connotation that was a little subjective. And you can move your ratios towards or within these ranges freely. If they are outside the ranges, you don't have to move them. But if you do move them, they can only move towards the ranges. So most of your available movement is downwards. With a couple of exceptions. What happens when we move a ratio? Well, it depends on a couple of things. How big the class is before, uh, you make the change and how much of a change you make. In this model, we are modeling the effect of moving one more, uh, step towards equalizing the multi-res with the new multi-residential and the residential classes. This would be the third of a four-step process. And that would shift approximately before levy change, approximately $50,000 off of that class, multi-residential. And it would increase by, uh, all other properties by 0.016%. That's about a $1.95 for the average residential property. And again, this is not a, uh, multi-residential is not a huge class. So making that movement, although it's almost 10%, is not a, has a, has a fairly modest impact. I mean, that's depend, that's subjective in, in some ways. But if we were to say, do the same thing with commercial, which is far, far larger, um, you know, if, if we were to do a 10% reduction on that, it would shift a lot more taxes. You'd be looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, you know, being a small class, it, it does have an effect, but not a huge effect. And this would be that continuation. Just on that multi-res, this is the most moved ratio in the province. Many, many municipalities, including your neighbors, have or are moving these down towards equalization. There's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of reasons for this. There's, there's been indications that that differential could be forced away at some point, which you wouldn't want to have to, uh, absorb the shift all in one year. It's also housing. I don't think there's probably anybody on council that doesn't, um, hear a lot about housing. It is one of the biggest issues we've dealt with as municipalities in, in, in decades. So it is a very sort of pro-housing, pro-housing friendly move. It will also shift taxes to some degree amongst area municipalities. Uh, so we want to, you know, keep that in mind. Uh, generally speaking, it will shift taxes out of a property, uh, municipalities with more multi-res and into with less. But these are property-specific shifts. At this point, we're just rolling them up. The shifts remain between multi-res and other properties. So for, for example, um, although we see, you know, a shift out of Owen Sound, out of, uh, Miford, that means they have more multi-residential, um, you know, more multi-residential assessment. And that means that the impact locally is, is actually higher. This model is also premised on, on the basis that Owen Sound will make a complementary shift. 50% of your multi-residential assessment approximately is in Owen Sound. So in order for this to take effect, uh, they need to lower theirs too. And they have been, there's been a in step with the counties, uh, for, for stage migration. Once, whether you make a change or not, whatever your ratios are, municipal levy change and, and, and budgetary increases are completely different. They're about how much you raise, not who shares in it. They're always applied equally and last as the final step. Currently, um, based on the staff report and, and, and your budgetary, uh, goals. We're looking at a 3.17%. That's what this model uses levy increase. It applies at the end. Again, it's shared equally on a percentage basis by all properties. And that would apply whether you do the, you know, the, the shift or not. So in this case, when we look at those and we layer them on, when I mentioned this, I kind of, uh, foreshadowed my, my discussion around this at the very beginning. We have to consider year-over-year change. When we look at the county bylaw from one year to the next, there are different influences. And, uh, so we want to be, you know, very careful to understand that we have levy change, but we also had growth and potentially this multi-residential shift. While the combined impact of the, uh, levy change and the potential multi-res shift means that, you know, residential taxpayers will see an increase over year end of 3.35% on, on that county portion of their levy. If we took the bylaw from last year to this year, we would see far greater, uh, changes. And a lot of that has been supplied by, um, new, new assessment and new revenue in the growth. So we want to make sure that we're, we're looking at that carefully and what the counties, spending decisions this year mean. And the same is true at, at the local level. And then we also had this aggregate shift was contributing to the 3.35. So all of these things contribute to the 3.35 and we want to distinguish those from growth. So that's, that's, uh, you know, kind of tells us what we're going to do, um, in terms of start ratios, what you may do in terms of changing that multi-res, and then what that would all mean, the, the net of those decisions would be, that would be approximately the increase on, on a residential property and, and other class properties versus year end. The other topic that, that I'm going to speak about very briefly is the new, new multi-residential subclass that's become available. Just to give you an idea of what the multi-residential class is, the multi-residential class is a, a property with improvements on it, a building or buildings that are made up of seven or more residential units. So that's a fully fledged residential unit that you can sleep, eat, uh, uh, and live in. They can take the form of, um, apartment buildings, traditional apartment buildings, townhouse complexes, or even, in, in some cases, um, properties that appear to be detached if they're under a single title. Then we have the new multi-residential class. And then the new multi-residential class is basically the same as the multi-res, but it is just any building, any new complex, as the name would suggest, that has come on since April 2017. And that's the date of the building permit. So if a building was built in 2020, it's going to be new multi-res, not multi-res. It, it is already taxed at a ratio of one. It's already equalized with, um, residential. Only the older stock continues to be under the multi-residential class and then vacant land zoned for multi-residential use. If the, uh, last year, multi-residential was approximately 22% higher than residential and new multi-res, if you make your fourth or jump or move towards equalization, it'll be 11% this year. And the provincial education tax is the same for all three classes. So where's the new, new multi-res subclass? Municipalities can adopt this class and provide a even greater municipal discount to new multi-residential properties. And how it would work is, uh, you pick a discount from zero or just, you know, you wouldn't have a discount of zero, but up to 35%. And once you adopted that, um, and it doesn't have to be part of your 2025 tax policy because it's not going to apply to any properties this year. Once you adopted that, if I were to come along and take a, a, a building permit in, uh, you know, Gray Highlands for a multi-residential complex, when that multi-residential complex comes online, I'd be taxed at 35% less than the residential rate. Okay. That's only on the municipal portion. It is not on the education portion. So I'd get a break. You don't have to, you don't have to make a decision on this. It's just out there as an available, um, item. Were you to consider it or want to look at it further? There's some due diligence that you would, you'd want to undertake. Number one, you'd want to have some general projections of what this might be, mean financially and, and shift and the impact on other classes. It's not possible to do precise financial models like I showed you for the multi-res ratio reduction. And that's because the subclass and the properties that would be in it don't exist right now. And we have no idea whether past history is going to be representative of the future. There could be a company out there planning, you know, 10 giant new multi-res towers that we don't know about and that would change it. But we can, we can look at what it might mean generally. You also have to really look at the qualitative considerations, particularly equity issues. If we had somebody build a property last year and it's new multi-res at a ratio of one, do we want, is it, you know, are you comfortable, not saying you're not, but are you comfortable with, uh, a, a new partner coming online, a new multi-res building coming online? Getting a 35% break, knowing that they are, you know, competing for tenants and, and they, they could be the exact or very similar buildings. I also am urging my clients to be very cautious about expectations, um, in, in terms of outcomes. While this new subclass could be very housing-friendly signal, uh, it could serve some certain purposes. There's some strategic ways to use it. It is unlikely that even a 35% reduction in property taxes is going to trigger anybody who wouldn't otherwise be looking to build a multi-res building, come in and build one. That's not how these decisions are made. These are massive multi-million dollars, tens of million dollar investments in properties like this. And generally speaking, uh, people are going to base those decisions on a lot of other issues other than property tax. Well, it'd be great for a break. As a developer, they're going to be looking for tenants, they're going to be looking for land, they're going to be looking for all sorts of things, uh, to make that decision. So it's sort of sold as an incentive and it can be, it possibly could be positive. But I don't believe it would independently impact housing stock. It's a subjective comment, but we've done a lot of research on ratio movement, uh, historic research. We've looked at a lot of things about tax policy and multi-residential ratios and growth, and there is no correlation. We haven't identified any correlation in that analysis and, and much of it has been very detailed and thorough. So while it's a subjective comment, it's, it's informed by a lot of research and experience. So that's my presentation. Um, I'm happy to answer, you know, of course, any questions or revisit anything I said.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Fries. And just before I open it for council questions, I'll just look to Director Spicer if there's anything she wanted to add before questions.
For you, Madam Warden, uh, I'll let council ask any questions and then I can speak to my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so I'll put it out then for council questions. And if possible, if you could, uh, direct the presenters to the, is the slide you're referring to, or if it's, if it's a specific question. So I'm looking here online. I don't see hands up. I am looking around the room and I'm not seeing hands up. Director Spicer, I don't see any hands up in the room. So anything further?
For you, Madam Warden. I think everything has been covered quite well by Peter and the, the only comments I had as far as my report are of course that the upper tier municipality is responsible for tax policy for eight of the member municipalities, and these are set annually. And of course, as Peter has mentioned, Owen Sound is responsible for their own policy. And the tax policy apportions the burden across the different tax classes. And so that's if, uh, you approve the report today, then we'll be bringing back a bylaw, um, to pass the policy. Peter's also mentioned that the properties are assessed based on values, uh, dated to January 1, 2016. The study that Peter prepared, um, was shared with the member municipality treasurers. And we discussed on a call on February 6th. So the group was in support of continuing the reduction to the multi-res ratio by a quarter of the movement. And as mentioned, Owen Sound reviewed their tax policy report earlier this week, and they also approved, uh, similar reduction. And again, that that's important that both Gray County and Owen Sound are, um, in step with the reductions. It doesn't affect the 2025 approved budget that you approved in January. And what it does is adjust the distribution of taxes among the various property tax classes. And with that, um, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm looking around the room and I don't see any further hands up, nor do I see any online. So oh, there we go. We'll go over to Counselor Greg.
Thank you for the opportunity. I think we've already moved the motion before the presentation, correct? I would just like to say, yes, we did pass it Monday night, uh, at the city of Owen Sound. There's certain, certainly inequity that comes through, uh, in the spreadsheets that are provided by Peter and his excellent presentation. I like to put the inequity in, into dollars, uh, and what that means for people. Cause at the end of the day, they just care about the actual dollar amount of their taxes. And I spoke to this on Monday night at, at Owen Sound. Our residential tax rate in Owen Sound is approximately $1,851 on multi-res, uh, which is the older, um, and residential per $100,000 of assessment. And the new multi-residential is $1,382 essentially when you extend out the tax rate. So the difference is $469 for what essentially could be the same building side by side depended upon when one was built. And it's really hard to describe why you're going to tax, uh, one of those entities differently, um, than the other. So, our full rate, uh, is a $596, $596 per $100,000. And at the county level, I see that, uh, currently it's $493 per $100,000 of assessment, 404,000, uh, for the newer, um, res, multi-residential. So again, we've got $89 per $100,000 of assessment. So again, when you're, when you're working with your ratepayers and you're talking about equal buildings, equal properties, one being taxed differently than the others, that's, that's a one being taxed differently than the others, that's, that's a pretty tough thing to be able to defend, that type of inequity that still exists. So I'm glad to see the recommendation still moving towards merging those to a value of one in the ratio and removing that inequity, and it is positive. I mentioned this Monday night, but I did have a letter provided to me in an email form from a resident which indicated that they would have a 1.4% reduction for their property tax on their rental unit effective December 31st, 2024. So it is still, it's positive to see through Mary Lou's team, and I think Peter's firm is involved in creating those letters and those amounts. But it's good to see that those, those values are passed on and provided to the residents, so that we are making a real conscious effort in trying to get rid of that inequity and create more balance out there in the community for taxes. So this is my comments, thanks.
Okay, thank you, and not seen any further hands. We're ready to call the vote, all those in favor? And that is Carrie, thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, a five-minute break? I think we'll do a five-minute break, and then we will continue on with remaining items in Section 7 and return to 6A at the end, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, County Council. I appreciated the break time as well as the time for staff to organize what we will be presenting in the next items. So we are ready to move on then to Item 7B, which is the Future Ready Gray Metrics. It's recommended that report CAORC W0425 be received for information along with the attached draft metrics for Future Ready Development Program, and that staff be directed to continue engagement with stakeholders, including local municipalities and the development industry on implementation approaches for Future Ready Development Program, and report back to council with a final set of metrics and a recommendation, recommended implementation approach. May I ask for a mover and a seconder? Moved by Counselor Kentner, seconded by Counselor Dobrain. It's now on the floor for discussion, and I will look to staff then for Ms. Swanson. You'd like to come forward?
Thank you. So I'm going to provide a brief overview of the report. Do I share my screen, or you're going to share it for me? Fantastic. So the Future Ready Development Program is a project you'll have heard about before. Previously, it would have been called the Tri-County Green Development Standard. The program has evolved over the past year, we've been working on it. And in reflection of some of those evolutions, we've also renamed it the Future Ready Development Program. These types of programs seek to establish consistent metrics for performance of new development. Those metrics can be for things like energy efficiency, complete streets, tree canopy, and then use existing planning processes to implement them, allowing us to recognize and celebrate development that achieves a higher performance standard, while also supporting our industry with education and information about opportunities to develop in a more high-performing way. The context, why are we doing this? So the province of Ontario, along with all provinces, have committed that by 2030, we will have net zero building codes, meaning that at the provincial level, all new construction will need to achieve net zero-ready energy and emissions, meaning they'll be highly energy efficient. They will have the opportunity to produce as much energy as they use were they to install renewable energy. So really, this program is about supporting our local development industry and being ready for those building codes. We want to make sure that we are well-positioned to benefit from this shift towards low-carbon construction and also resilient construction, so ensuring that the homes that are built in our area are ready for the increases in extreme weather that we anticipate and know that we will be experiencing. We have a lot of existing clean energy expertise regionally, and we want to be able to leverage that and support it as much as possible. Going Green and Gray, our Climate Change Action Plan, identifies that these kind of programs are a real opportunity to reduce local greenhouse gas pollution. We know that by making sure we build resiliently and energy efficiently now, it's going to be cheaper and less disruptive than if we need to go in and retrofit later. Homes with higher energy performance are cheaper to operate. And if you look at the total cost of ownership, so the upfront cost to build, and then the ongoing lifetime cost to operate, they are lower. There is an initial cost increment, so it does cost more initially to build to a higher energy-efficient standard, but that's estimated to be between 3% to 5% of the total project cost, which is something obviously that needs to be seriously considered, but also looked at in the context of other cost drivers such as inflation. In a 2023 survey, 60% of Ontarians said that energy efficiency was important or very important in their next home purchase, be it their first home or a subsequent home. And of those, 65% were reduced, were motivated by reducing them of the utility bills. So we know that this is a cost concern for Ontario residents and something that we we hope this program can help alleviate. In terms of the project itself, uh, this, uh, the next two slides provide a bit of a timeline of what we've been doing, but some of the key points outlined in the report is that this project is in partnership with Dufferin and Wellington Counties. Uh, we received four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars from Entercan in grant funding, um, to support this work as they recognize the need to accelerate energy efficient construction across, across the country. Uh, we, through a competitive procurement process, hired Urban Equation and the Planning Partnership to support us in the technical work. Um, to make sure that any of the metrics that are being proposed are grounded in the best current science and knowledge around construction and development. Uh, this slide indicates that we did start by talking to the public, uh, to find out from local residents, their interest and support for these kind of ideas and also what their vision would be for uh, resilient and energy efficient construction in the future. When we came to refining the standards or refining the metrics, so actually getting into the technical piece, we really centered, uh, input and advice from our local development industry and also the local municipality planning staff. Uh, we held conversations, many conversations. Uh, so with industry, there were three different sessions in April, June, November of 2024. With a hundred and fourteen participants across those, and then subsequently, uh, Scott and myself held five one-on-one meetings with local developers to hear from them directly. Um, folks who are building in our area, their thoughts, concerns, or suggestions. And in terms of our, your local municipal planning and building staff, similarly, there were three Gray County sessions, one in May, June, and October of 2024, and each had between twenty and thirty attendees. So just know that the metrics that are attached to this report have been sort of viewed and considered and had feedback from really a diversity of key stakeholders. Uh, this graphic is very tiny when you look at it from a distance, uh, but rather than, um, I can certainly provide details on some of the other municipalities who have implemented building performance programs. Uh, but I think that, you know, what you can see in this, this map is that we are certainly not alone. There are fifteen jurisdictions in Ontario uh, that have implemented, uh, building performance programs, the earliest in two thousand and six. Uh, so these are not new tools or programs. That said, we need to just take what we can learn from these other programs and make sure that we're finding a approach that makes sense in Gray County. Uh, we certainly know that things are not going to be transferable, so it's not that we've taken a performance program from Ajax and said, let's do that in grey, but rather tried to understand what's worked and what hasn't, and then put it through the filter of our local development and planning industry. We are working in partnership with Wellington and Dufferin, uh, to create a consistent development environment. Well, one of the pieces of feedback from the development community is they don't want to have to be looking at a patchwork of different programs. So by providing that consistency across the region, the intention is to simplify and make easier for our developers to participate. Uh, we do know that looking at jurisdictions that have these kinds of programs, there's been no reduction in housing starts. So I know we all want to be building for the future, making sure our homes are efficient and resilient to extreme weather, but most importantly, we want to make sure there are homes for our residents. And what we're hearing from our colleagues in jurisdictions that have these programs is that this hasn't slowed down development. So how would this all happen? Um, so as I mentioned, it would be integrated into existing planning processes. So these kind of programs uh, leverage the municipal authority to define a complete development application. Um, and so if implemented, this program would indicate that to submit a complete application, uh, the development would need to include a performance metrics checklist. Um, and I'll speak a bit more about the details of that, but that's sort of the mechanism. Um, initially, uh, this program could apply to residential developments of ten-plus units. Uh, so if someone's building a single home, they could choose to participate, but that's not really the design of the program. And similarly, at this time, uh, the design of the draft metrics in front of you is not intended for industrial or commercial properties. It's really about residential. Um, in response to those many meetings, uh, in sections, sessions of feedback and response, we have adjusted, uh, some of the elements of the program in response to that feedback. Uh, so we're suggesting or discussing the possibility of a point-based system. Uh, so this is to allow greater flexibility. So you would see there's the attached metrics to the report. Each of those metrics would have an allocation of points. And if a development pursued one of those metrics and illustrated they had met the metric threshold, they would be allocated the points associated with it. Uh, so this allows greater flexibility where a developer can say this makes sense for this development, or this doesn't make sense, um, and sort of pursue the things that are most appropriate. Uh, the metrics fall into four categories, uh, natural environment, community and transportation, built environment, which is where energy efficiency falls. Uh, and then there's also the opportunity to discuss the idea of then having a section for regional or local priorities, where either each county or even individual municipalities could say beyond what's already in this program, these are key priorities for us. Um, I will note that our Gray County official plan already has enabling language for this kind of program. Uh, it was introduced in a previous update, and also that these programs really are about outcome-based targets. We're not prescribing how um, construction materials or methods, because those are really appropriately governed under the Ontario Building Code. So this kind of program would be complementary to the health and safety requirements that fall under the OBC. So this possible points-based system, um, each of the metrics in the appendix to the report, as I mentioned, would have a different points allocation. Uh, and in the next report back to you, we could present sort of different points thresholds. So if a development achieved approximately forty percent of the available points, they could be recognized as a bronze, uh, future-ready building, um, in grey. If they were to achieve sixty percent, uh, silver, and if they were to achieve most of the points, eighty percent of the points, they could be a gold, so a gold star, future-ready development. Again, there's still flexibility. You could have different pathways to achieving these different thresholds of points. The report also discusses and presents different implementation options. Um, at this time, we're not recommending an implementation option, but rather seeking to present different approaches we could consider. Uh, optional would allow developers to submit a metric checklist for recognition if they chose. Voluntary could indicate that a completed development application should include a metric checklist. But it would be entirely discretionary as to which points, uh, the development pursued would simply be an opportunity for us to collect data on what kind of development is already happening in our area, what kind of high-performance elements are already being included. Uh, and the third option would be performance threshold. So what we see in most of those other jurisdictions that currently have these programs is some kind of minimum points threshold. Where any new development that is brought forward needs to achieve a certain, uh, foundation level of points to be considered, uh, in compliance. The report discusses one potential implementation pathway, uh, that would start, um, in phase one, where it would be the, they would be a voluntary approach throughout. And in phase one, we would say, please complete the checklist, let us know what you're doing, help us gather the data that we need to better support you in high-performance development. Then after an initial period, potentially of two years of reporting, we could phase in a requirement to meet that bronze performance threshold based on how that first pilot period went. Uh, and then throughout from the initial implementation and onwards, all development would be recognized for meeting whatever level of performance it achieved, be it bronze, silver, or gold. Uh, the categories of the checklist, uh, metrics are, as I mentioned, natural environment, community and transportation, built environment, and then that option for regional priorities. Um, so these are really sort of established elements of high-performance development, so ensuring that the natural environment is being protected, that our tree canopy, um, native and adaptive species, so you know, things that make sense to be growing here, uh, our stormwater quality, park access, et cetera. Um, in community and transportation, there would be the opportunity to pursue points related to electric vehicle readiness or walkable and complete streets. And then in the built environment section, uh, again, the energy efficiency points available for solar readiness, um, and also points available for, uh, construction and waste management. So really best practices all being rewarded. So just pulled out one of the metrics that's appended to the report. I'm not going to go through it all in detail, but rather speak to kind of the, the overall layout of what each metric would include. Uh, so it would be indicated when this metric would be applicable, be it a site plan or draft plan of subdivision, when it could be evaluated, uh, the total number of points that would be available. And then a breakdown of the requirements to achieve the different points thresholds. Um, so here you can see there is one point available or proposed, the potential for one point to be available simply for, for preparing an energy strategy report. So just showing that the developer has thought about different pathways to energy efficiency, uh, one point would be available. And then actually achieving different levels of improved energy performance, additional points would be possible. Um, and then at the bottom, you can see that it starts to lay out, uh, how these different elements could be evaluated, what kind of documentation would be considered part of a complete application. Uh, so the next steps are to incorporate any feedback we receive or comments today, um, as we move forward. Uh, to continue to work to finalize the draft metrics. Um, so we are, you know, circling back again, um, with key stakeholders. Uh, and then really continue to explore implementation approaches based on the feedback today. So talking with local municipalities. Um, we do through the Entercan funding that I mentioned, have funding to fully support, uh, a staff person to work on the implementation phase. Make sure that it receives the consideration that it requires. Uh, and that staff person would continue to work with local developers to understand the barriers and opportunities to this project. And one of the pieces of the work that hopefully will support that is we also have Entercan funding to do a talent in business attraction and retention plan. Uh, so working hopefully, well, we're not, we haven't signed any agreements yet, but working with local expertise to understand how we can best support our development industry. And what kind of training or development opportunities might be needed, uh, to successfully implement this program. Also with that, I will happily take in questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So with that, then, uh, we will look to, and if I could just have the screen. Thank you. So I can keep an eye out for anybody that's online. Looking around the room, I see a question from councillor McQueen.
You missed Adam Warden, and thank you for the report. Couple of things come to mind, but maybe you did mention it's citing of like sun flows this way, citing of your building. Sometimes I think there's some method to the madness of that of for solar, solar energy. Like even through your windows, larger windows to the south, smaller windows to the north are, are being, a lot of farmsteads, uh. You, you did talk about trees, but a lot of times trees can work as windbreaks. It's keeps when the wind blows, it sucks energy out of your house because of wind chill and stuff. Um, also material of, of homes. We've seen more with, and I'm not sure if something changing with the building code, but we saw, we've seen, uh, communities disappear from a, from a fire and that type of thing, and the reasons around that type of thing. It's a little bit maybe off, but I just don't know if there's some suggested changes to the building code that, you know, whether it's brick or steel or stuff like that is resilient. If, if if there is changes or effects from climate change as well. I don't know if you have any comments.
Thank you for the question, uh, through the chair. There is one metric around, uh, the funnily titled embodied carbon, which does look at building materials from emissions perspective. Uh, we have seen an increase, uh, perhaps counterintuitively in, in mass timber, so actually using, uh, timber for, for low-rise development. Um, in that it does meet the fire safety requirements that we need, but, but allows us to use less or create less carbon pollution in the construction phase. And, and certainly, I, I would say we, we would defer to the OBC for things around emergency preparedness. This program is really around, uh, sort of exceeding or higher performance than that. Um, but, uh, there are within the OBC requirements around post-disaster buildings and, and things around, you know, tying down rooms appropriately for, for extreme winds. So we defer to OBC for the health and safety of our development, and then would suggest this program can enhance beyond that.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions here? Uh, yes, councillor Dicker.
Thank you, Madam Ward, and thank you for the report. Um, just looking at some of the metrics that are there for, for getting points, and are we creating a an expectation on the part of developers when it's, you know, if you say you're within ten minutes of a transit system, and we don't really have transit in our communities, or the other one is, is even organics, are, are we are we creating a challenge for ourselves going forward that we need to have those available as a municipality if we're going to ask builders and developers to meet that standard?
Uh, thank you through the chair. Certainly, uh, uh, there is, as in working with the local municipality, we've been asking exactly that kind of question. Do we have to servicing currently to support the metrics that are being prepared? Um, one of the pieces of feedback we actually got specifically on the transit, uh, one was the idea that we should amend it currently. It says a transit stop, but we would be looking to alter that to a transit route or a potential future transit route. So recognizing this is, um, as we're building homes, especially larger subdivisions, uh, we're sort of locking in the built form for decades to come. And so we would look at municipal plans around servicing and make sure that anything that is being, uh, allocated points aligns with intended servicing at the municipal level. Are we setting an expectation? Um, I, I mean, I think this program seeks to support and promote, uh, development that is aligned with our community objectives. So, um, there's lots of pathways to compliance. Uh, you would be able to meet the points thresholds, uh, without pursuing specific ones, but insofar as, uh, transit readiness or, uh, you know, diverse waste management options are aligned with our community priorities, then I would say, yes, this program further supports those. Maybe it looks like, yeah.
And, and I, I agree with, you know, having those targets is good. It's just if we, if it becomes entrenched and required at some point in time, and when I read through it, it kind of looked that would move in that direction. But, you know, is required, then would we have developers saying, well, I can't need it because you're not supplying it. So, uh, that's just a concern as I look forward. The system that you're proposing right now is voluntary or whatever it might be, doesn't create that problem, but if, uh, if we take those next steps, it could.
Yeah, through you, Warden, and, and further to what Linda's provided and, and to specifically to councillor Dickert's, uh, questions. Um, and part of that is why, um, one of the pathways to potential implementation of this is to look at some of those voluntary approaches as well as looking at a point-based system. Um, recognizing that there may be some services that are provided in some municipalities and not in others. So making sure that there's flexibility in the, in the process or in the system, uh, and, and metrics to be able to identify other potential pathways to achieve certain points. Uh, but again, starting with a voluntary program where we can, as, as Linda indicated, work with the development industry, work with, uh, uh, builders, work with education, uh, institutions like local Jordan College and others to be able to, uh, provide and, and, and get ready for some of these changes that are going to happen. As, as Linda indicated earlier. The OBC building code is set to go to, uh, net zero requirements by 2030 for all new buildings. And so how can we work together as a, as a, as municipalities, as this building industry and, and, and everybody in between to be able to get ready for those changes here locally? Um, so that's, that's what the, we think the program will be uh, uh, truly beneficial for is to have, make sure that everybody is both future-ready for those inevitable changes.
Okay, thank you for those answers. Okay, we'll go to councillor Boddy next.
Uh, just, just first to comment on the, uh, the topic that's out there. Of course, the, uh, provincial planning, uh, policy talks about urban, uh, development, urban settings, and, you know, having a development out in the middle of nowhere on, uh, water and, uh, and septic beds where there's no schools and there's no shopping and there's, et cetera, is going to lead to more transportation, more driving, uh, um, like this, one or more SUVs, I suppose. So I think it is important that we plan and maybe should have been planning for years, but that's, it's, it doesn't matter now, uh, having more urban development in, uh, urban settings. My, my concern is, and I voiced it right at the start, when, uh, Bruce County isn't participating in this. Um, we got to make sure, and I guess this is a question, I'm, I'm stating it as a statement, but are we, um, really working, like if we presented the implementation, um, pathway, categories and things to the development, uh, business. presented the implementation um pathway categories and things to the development uh business? We have to have developers buying in. Um, I've received phone calls from developers that were upset and they're just going to build in Bruce County. Now, will they, when they've got an investment of land in uh this area? At some point, they've got to cash in on their investment, but I think it's really important if we're going to have buy in that we've got buy in from the developers and that they're the uh central part of this and that we're not making good environmental decisions uh and and then being left out of the process. So we've we've met with them. Are we taking their feedback? Are we using it? Are we keeping them uh happy and keeping them involved, I guess, is my question.
Yeah, through the chair, thank you for the question, and I'll maybe invite Scott also to to add his comments after, but um, yes. I we have made a number of modifications to the program in response to what we've heard in those meetings. Um, uh, we initially, there was a a uh this may, this may not please you based on your previous comment, but a an urban density, not urban, a density requirement. Um, but it wasn't specified between settlement and rural, and we took that out because we heard that it wasn't feasible. Um, we have modified to this points based system in direct response to requests for flexibility. Um, we are, you know, taking on board other specific suggestions and kind of considering them. Um, you know, you can well imagine this kind of program, it's impossible to make everyone happy. Um, and so uh that is partly the the intent with the flexible system, because we do have local developers already um who are building entirely net zero ready homes in the in Gray County. So we know these things are possible locally, and we want to give them the opportunity to be recognized for doing that while also recognizing that there may be constraints or um different priorities with different developers. And so I think uh, yes, we are being responsive to the industry and simultaneously recognizing that we're trying to keep everyone um happy enough uh but are unlikely to be able to fully satisfy um all requests, but I'll let Scott um add his.
Yeah, through you, Madam Warden. Uh, thank you for your comments and questions, uh, Counsel Body, and and I I echo what Linda said, like, we we met with a a diverse range of uh developers and builders in the area. And and to me, I'd almost lump it into two buckets. Those that that build residential plans a subdivision and and those that build multi unit buildings, like apartment buildings or condo buildings in that regard. So even if we look at potential standards like uh E V readiness for parking, that looks a lot different if you're saying on the outside of your home, you need you need an outlet kind of thing. Versus i- if you're saying for all four hundred spots in a surface level parking lot, you need a plug kind of thing, because that gets quite expensive. So we've been learning a lot from the development community. Uh, as Linda said, I don't think we're going to satisfy everybody, but the the chief request that we heard was flexibility. And and, you know, part of the reason for this program is as both Linda and Randy have shared is is to be ready for that twenty thirty building code. And and so I think it's it's baby steps along the way, working together um to 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 get there. Um, and and I suspect we'll still see further changes between some of the metrics now and what we what finally gets presented to council in in a number of months' time. Um, but uh, but we are, we are trying to, listen, not only the developers, but one of the other key audiences, and and Linda mentioned this. Um, was the local building officials too, and because that's not a service we offer at the county, um, we need to understand uh how they're going to uh look at this and and how that interacts with the Ontario Building Code in that regard.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go to Counsel Dobrine next.
Thank you, and uh thank you for the presentations. Very interesting. I, the question that I have maybe twofold, this is a recognition program. It's there's no financial benefit to the developer other than it'll it'll be, it'll be a recognition program. Was the, were the private builders, the ones for those lots out in rural Ontario on on, you know, agr- agricultural properties consulted, or would they be eligible be because the individuals who are building those custom homes? It's, you know, they're not high density, they're not, but they they do employ geothermal or heat pumps or solar panels. Uh, there may be incorporating E V readiness, and I think having the local building officials involved can also include providing a handout to those people applying for permits that could then oh, well, if I incorporate this, I might get a little plaque that that goes on my house, and that encourages others who visit to s- to understand the process. I I'm I'm just wondering if any consultation was had with the 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 um custom builders in our community?
Thank you for the question uh through the chair. Yes, it should confirm it is a recognition program. Uh, we did discuss and have some exploration of potential incentives of those other municipalities that currently have these kind of programs. Only one currently offers a financial incentive, and that's City of Toronto in the form of a development charge rebate. Um, at this time, it didn't seem feasible or appropriate to suggest that kind of incentivization um in in our program. Um, and this, again, my apologies, I may look to Scott on this. I am, I am unsure if the uh developers we invited to participate to certainly do those larger ten unit plus also do custom homes. Uh, but I think it's a great suggestion. Um, the metrics would certainly be applicable on a single home. Um, so I I we could take back and consider if we would have the internal capacity to be evaluating custom homes against the metrics. But in terms of providing education and information, um, that would certainly be something we could look at and likely uh recommend. And I will just maybe ask Scott if he knows if the developers who we have spoken to also build custom homes or just those larger um developments.
Thanks, Linda, through you, uh, uh, Ward Ratosoff. Um, we did speak with a diverse range of developers. Some of them then do the odd, you know, larger custom home in that regard. A lot of them have, you know, a a series of model that you can choose from, not necessarily cookie cutter in any sort of derogatory way, but but, you know, they have their preferred building styles, but some do custom. The one sort of distinguishment I'd make here, um, and and Linda jump in if I go completely astray is that these future ready development metrics, I probably have my words wrong there. Um, are 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 applying at at the planning stages for for sort of larger developments. So these would be subdivisions or condominiums or 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 um site plans in that regard. So, you know, if you had a rural severance or if you had an existing rural lot where somebody was building one of those homes, no doubt, we'd love to have the expertise in our community that they could they could build and 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 have a green home in that regard, whether that be at the builder level or whether that be at the municipal staff or 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 C B O level. Um, but it wouldn't necessarily apply to people coming in for severances or building permits in that regard. It only applies to those sort of larger, higher order development applications. And just to loop back to Counsel Body's comment. Um, those are applications in the county plan that we focus within our settlement areas. And and that actually leads into the next report too, but I'll I'll wait and speak more then.
Okay, thank you, and we'll go to Counsel Greg next.
Thank you, Warden. Uh, just a couple of quick questions, and just to for precision here, I've heard that we had lots of good consultation, but there's a sentence in here that states developers and home builders from across all three counties were invited, and across the three sessions, there were a hundred and fourteen participants. Am I to read correctly that that's referring to a hundred and fourteen actual home builders and developers? Uh, I just want accuracy there. What is a participant um in those meetings?
Through the chair, I, it would refer to maybe state my understanding of the question. I would not be able to confirm that there were a hundred and fourteen different home builders or developers. I would need to go back and kind of go through if we participated, but yes. Across those three sessions, likely, um, not likely, definitely, there were, for example, Sinclair Homes, which participated in multiple sessions, or Barry's, which participated in multiple sessions. So I don't have the count for you, I think, to answer your specific question, but yes, those participants all represented different local builders.
Okay, that's good. Happy to hear that. Um, you referred to the G T A um and they already have green development standards in place, and the re- the reasons that people build where they do largely is driven by demand. Uh, and that's, so that's obvious that that's where people need to build because they can't afford to build in Toronto. It's just it's extended out from the G T A and it's it's a cost of of living for people and housing affordability. What lessons were learned from these municipalities? Yes, they didn't see a slowdown in in building, but that's obvious because you're still just, you can't leapfrog two and a half hours away to still drive to work in the G in Toronto. Was there any lessons learned, takeaways in terms of what type of increases may have been contributed to the housing affordability crunch that we hear so often about? Because that's certainly, I think the concern of many is, we always hear about housing affordability. I want to know what is this contributing potentially to that that discussion? What are our takeaways from the G T A? Yes, there are developments happening anyway. What's it, what's incorporating these enhancements done to the cost of housing?
Uh, through the chair, so the the estimate um generally is that there's that three to five percent initial increase in cost of construction. Um, some of the things we heard, uh, we spoke with, we spoke with uh a developer who is starting to build in Mississauga, but primarily has built it in Toronto. Um, and uh, it's it seemed that for sort of the the tenure of her career, the Toronto Green Standard had always been in place. Um, and we asked explicitly around, oh, do you have a sense of what this does to your pro forma? And it, they don't even analyze it because it's just how how it's done. Um, so and again, Toronto, very different development context from ours, but I think just to to share that it over time has really normalized. Um, we didn't hear from other jurisdictions around price increases. It's hard, there's so, as as you're well aware, there's so many factors that are feeding into the price of a house. It's really hard to tease out. This is what was driven by a high performance requirement. Um, but ensuring ongoing affordability, uh, there is a section of a points uh or an allocation of points in the draft metric specifically around affordable and chainable housing. So making sure that housing affordability is woven in with any environmental performance requirements.
Okay, thanks for that. Um, I think we have to be cognizant of that moving forward, because at the end of the day, for many people, what where they build and and what they build is contingent upon what the bank provides them. Um, and if they can't meet a certain borrowing threshold, then then they've they've encountered further challenges. So every 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 contribution we make to that cost is is something to consider. Um, when you get into some of the um, like, I think, um, did you have any discussions about underground parking is obviously better than on ground and has stormwater impacts? Um, permeable driveways is much better than than paved over. Uh, do you get into also some of the discussion? I know there's commentary about sidewalks. Concrete comes at a very high carbon cost to uh construct. Um, sometimes there may be instances where people, it's very tough to advocate for sidewalks on both sides of the streets, but save the planet at the same time, because the sidewalks that you're just advocating for here come with a really big carbon cost of construction. And once you paved over paradise, it's kind of gone, as opposed to saying, you know, the street is good enough, uh, can we live within our our means that way? Um, can you just expand on some of those considerations that you've maybe had? Uh, I guess, and and if if there's are there certain conversations you've had that are more localized that are different than the G T A two that already has them in place?
Thank you for the question. Um, so I I to be a bit of a broken record, I think we really looked at that flexibility piece. So there there are points available for embodied carbon, which is exactly what you're talking about, that high upfront carbon cost of a sidewalk, right? Um, so for a development that looks to reduce embodied carbon, which would include an analysis around concrete and sidewalks, there's points available there. Um, as it's currently drafted, uh, the complete streets points available. Uh, and I I want to double check this. Um, don't believe that we stipulate. I think we do stipulate uh a sidewalk, but we're not asking for sidewalks on both side of the street. To your point, our context is a bit different. We're not we don't have the the densities that really benefit from dual sidewalks. Um, in speaking with the local developers, I we heard um, we heard specific comments around really making sure we're sufficiently recognizing the construction of attainable housing. That was a local comment that we got. Um, so affordable attainable housing. Um, I had some great comments around uh the the, some of the first comments uh from Counsel McQueen around, you know, are we providing points for uh building orientation? If a, if a, if the the footprint of a subdivision has deliberately excluded an adjacent woodland, are they getting points? And we're still trying to figure out what that might look like, because what we're currently talking about in here is more about the trees within the footprint of the development. Um, we did receive, you know, significant constructive feedback on the technical elements of the metrics from local developers, and that was I think part of why N O C A M funded this. We're not the first rural jurisdiction to try and do something like this, but we are one of the first. It's another example of Gray being an innovator. Um, and so knowing that the G T A metrics and programs aren't going to work here, so how do we need to modify them?
Okay, so next we'll go to Counsel Kentner.
Thank you, and through you, uh, uh, Warden Matrasovs. Uh, Linda, I was glad to hear you mention uh Sinclair Homes. Uh, and we're very fortunate in Meford to be having a net zero subdivision uh built at this time. Um, and from what I know, prices are quite competitive. Um, yeah, and uh, there's a lot of interest in the uh, the savings in operating a a a net uh zero home. What I wanted to ask is, are you aware, are there any other uh specific uh net zero uh subdivisions uh in in other parts of Gray County?
Your Madam Warden, this answer is going to sound like I'm pandering. Um, no, I think Meford's a bit of a a trend setter here with this particular developer. Um, I'm not personally aware, we've had certainly individual homes, and we've had individual homeowners come to uh both climate staff and planning staff to say, hey, we'd love to give you a tour of our home, because these are all the wonderful things we've done. Um, but I'm not aware personally of another developer in Gray that that is is building an entire development of either net zero or net zero ready. Um, that said, uh, hopefully this will will uh be a bit of a showcase for the area, and and we can see lots of others in the future.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking around the room, and I'll go to Counsel McQueen and then to Counsel Keating.
I will be quick. Just in a general form, over in Europe, they have heat source that comes from some other place that's generated in a huge system that that goes into, is there any of that type of uh development being looked upon in the future in the sense of uh, you know, it could, you said, you 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 have points to run wire to your attic to put a solar panel, but it could be a commercial type solar panel, or it could be a commercial type wind generation or something that everybody sort of like a condominium type thing, but they're all take that heat source because maybe economies of scale.
Thank you through you, Warden. And so there aren't currently points allocated, but certainly that concept of district energy is very much uh front of mind. Uh, there are examples of subdivisions in Markham that are uh the heating is like electricity, so it's uh it's a service, so it's not an in-home furnace or an in-home heat pump, but rather a district system that provides heating. It does require a certain amount of density as a solution. Um, we recently met with staff from Enbridge Sustain, which is sort of the uh sustainability arm of Enbridge that off that works on things like district energy, and they have offered to provide uh information or presentations to our local planning staff around what district solutions could maybe look like in Gray. So don't think we're at the stage of readiness where it would be appropriate to be trying to allocate points, but it's certainly a a technology and approach that we're we're exploring.
Okay, next we'll go to Counsel Keating.
Thank you, Warden Matrasovs, and uh, thank you, Linda, for the report. And I wondered if I could ask, I understand the program predominantly applies to home builds, but I'm curious to understand if our Rockwood Terrace construction could be evaluated and if standards could apply. It's how wonderful it would be to be able to promote Rockwood Terrace as a silver or a gold standard build. It would just be a great model for this program in the county.
We're going to go to the deputy. We're going to go to the Deputy CEO.
Thank you for that question through you, Warden. So with respect to the Rockwood Terrace, the new Rockwood Terrace, right from the beginning, we identified and we did a net zero assessment to determine what elements could be incorporated as part of that build to be a minimum net zero ready. So on, right now, we're on the pathway to make sure that it's at least net zero ready. And really to make it full net zero is by adding solar panels at some point in the future. And as part of the build, we're actually putting in conduit to be able to allow for solar panel hookups, both rooftop as well as in areas in the property, to eventually make that full build fully net zero. So by adding those solar panels, not calculating the points and stuff like that, would be achieving essentially what would be considered probably a gold standard is associated with Rockwood Terrace, once we add those solar panels. So, so yeah, so we've incorporated energy efficiencies into the HVAC systems, the actual building envelope, making sure that it's as airtight as possible, while ensuring obviously that it's still comfortable for residents and staff from an overall building perspective. That will in turn hopefully keep our energy costs lower than what it would have otherwise been, but also being able to achieve a net zero status in the near future as well.
Okay, thank you. And I'm not seeing any further hands up nor online. So thank you very much, Mrs. Swanson, for all that, and thank you to other staff members that have contributed as well. In that case, then I will call the vote. All those in favor. And that motion is carried. So we are going to need to break for lunch at this point and carry on with the remainder of the agenda afterwards. Madam Clerk, lunch until? Okay, so we will come back then at 1:15 for the conclusion of our agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, County Council. So we are now returning from our lunch break and we are going to pick up on item seven C. And with that, there is a recommendation that P D R C W twenty twenty five be received and that all written and oral submissions on official plan amendment number twenty three were considered and helped to make an informed recommendation and decision. And that proposed the that proposed a county official plan amendment number twenty three to amend the county's rural designation permitted uses and development policies be supported. And I by law to adopt the county official plan amendment be prepared for consideration by county council. May I ask for a mover? Moved by councillor Keveney, second or seconded by councillor Carlton. It's now on the floor for discussion, so I will look to director Taylor. And you're after lunch today.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden, and good afternoon, members of council. I'm not used to saying that. Yeah, thank you for your patience and and what we have before us is is maybe the exciting conclusion to to O P A twenty three. Which which first began in September of twenty twenty four. And and so just as a bit of a background, oh, I'll just let the slides catch up there, but I'm sure they're coming any second here now. Actually, I can just get going. It's it's all just words anyway. On the slides, I don't mean the hollow words. Sorry, digging myself a hole here. So the the county official plan was approved in in twenty nineteen and it's been updated a number of times since then. What's councils maybe most used to seeing is is the updates that come through privately initiated official plan amendments. So those would be developers or residents initiating an official plan amendment. But we have done a few that are county initiated as well. And and sort of the genesis behind official plan amendment number twenty three is to clarify some of the policies primarily in the county's rural designation. There were a few policies in there and and some permitted uses that at the time when the province approved the county's official plan in twenty nineteen seemed well crafted and 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 seemed like they would serve the county well. But quite frankly, we've had some questions on some of those and and we've had some some misinterpretations on on some of those policies. So we looked to to update the county official planet through O P A twenty three to clarify some of those policies. Official plan amendment number twenty three is not a fulsome consistency exercise with the the provincial planning statement. No doubt, we've considered the provincial planning statement, but it's much more broad than just the royal uses. And as council may be aware and and was in the twenty twenty five budget, the county is updating its growth management strategy right now. And the growth manager's growth management strategy is that document that looks twenty five to thirty years in the future to look at what our our population and employment growth projections will be. And for the first time this year, the the province has has structured it such that we're formally also assessing the Ministry of Finance's population projections in that regard. So staff fully anticipate once that growth management strategy is updated, there will be a need for further updates to the county official plan. One of the things that it will help tell us is is whether or not we have adequate land availability and supply to support our future growth needs. Or whether or not there needs to be growth in in any of our settlement areas in that regard. And and so if you like, this official plan amendment number twenty three is a bit of an interim amendment laser focused on our rural policies. And and at some point in the future, post that growth management strategy update, we would be looking to do a more fulsome consistency exercise with the provincial planning statement twenty twenty four in that regard. And. Okay. Oh, that's great. Well, thank you for for filling in there. If I could go to the next slide, that would be great. And so within the scope of of the official plan amendment, there's no mapping changes proposed in the policy. So we're not changing any of the rural lands to agricultural or vice versa. We're not updating the hazard lands or anything of that nature. We're also not changing any of our settlement area policies. So strictly speaking, this official plan amendment affects seven of our nine municipalities, because both the town of Hanover and city of One Sound are entirely in the primary settlement area. And as I said, it's focused on the rural, the rural policies. More specifically, we're looking at some of the permitted uses in rural. And we're also looking at some of the development criteria that back up those permitted uses. There are two very minor changes to the agricultural policies. One was due to an existing error whereby one section of the plan read one way with respect to aggregates in the agricultural designation and another section read another way. And and the second change in the agricultural designation is simply to align the agricultural policies with new policies that are being updated in the rural designation. This is not a radical rewrite of of the 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 philosophy behind the rural designation. This really is a refinement in that regard. One of the things we do need to stress, and this was stressed back in the initial presentation in September and also at the public meeting on November seventh, is O P A twenty three would not apply to existing applications that are already in process. If approved by county council at a later date, it would apply on a go forward basis should there be no appeals. But it doesn't apply to those applications that are already before county and municipal councils in that regard. So if I go on to the next slide, please refer. Thank you. And so as I mentioned, we did have a public meeting on November seventh. Some of you were in attendance for that meeting. We've had comments both in writing and and through the public meeting from from a number of of public bodies and some members of of the public and developers in that regard. We heard from the Grand River and Ottawa Saga Conservation Authorities, we heard from Belkenda and Birch Gas, staff at the municipality West Bray, a planning firm M H B C Planning on behalf of their client Thornbury Acres. And we also heard from COBID Engineering, and I'll get into a summary of those comments in just a second. The Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing didn't comment on O P A twenty three, but we did have a chat with their staff based on some of the comments we received and based on trying to clarify some of the interpretation matters with respect to the provincial planning statement twenty twenty four. And so as as was noted in the motion, the comments were very useful to the O P A twenty three process and and have resulted in some changes in in the final O P A. That's before council versus that version that was initially presented at in the September twenty twenty four and at the public meetings. We'll go over some of those changes in a second. If we could go on to the next slide here, please. With respect to the comments that were received, there is a detailed summary in the in the staff report along with a a staff response to each of those comments. But we'll just give very high level summary just for the purpose of the presentation. There was no concerns or objections from both from Enbridge, Bell, Ottawa Saga Valley Conservation Authority and Grand River Conservation Authority. West Bray staff had some very useful suggestions for some minor policy changes just to clarify some of the policies in official plan amendment number twenty three and and to clarify some of the intent in that regard. We did hear concerns from M H B C Planning over the impact on existing applications, that being their client Thornbury Acres and some of the policies with respect to the residential farm cooperatives. In response to those comments, we have added a site specific exception in the residential farm cooperative policies with respect to the Thornbury Acres development. That's that's already in process. Strictly speaking, that exception didn't, you know, arguably a hundred percent need to be added because it's 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 already clear that this only applies on a go forward basis, but just to make that a hundred percent crystal clear, we did add in that say specific exception. We also heard some comments from COBID Engineering, who who put forward the idea that there should be broader permitted uses in the county's rural designation. Specifically, they said the county's rural designation should permit modular home parks and and that they're a very attainable form of housing that could be considered across the countryside where they could be serviced appropriately. I'm going to respond to that further in just a second, but I just wanted to flag that for council. And they also had some concerns with respect to some of the limitations that were being placed on residential development associated with resource based recreational uses. And they had some concerns with the the, as they call it, the blanket ban on plans of subdivision and and condominium in the rural designation. And I'll say on a number of these fronts, the 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 subdivisions condominiums, this isn't new to official plan amendment number twenty three. The county official plan already doesn't permit subdivisions and condominiums as of right in the rural designation with the exception of agrimens. And and so this is just refining those policies. Similar to some of the comments we heard on on Linda's report today, the the county wants to provide rural areas that that are first and foremost supporting our our resource based uses in terms of farming, aggregate uses, forestry. We also want healthy natural environment and we want a diversified rural economy in in the rural areas of Gray County. So there is limited residential development allowed in in those rural areas. But we're not looking to open these up to large scale residential developments in the forms of plans of subdivision and condominium. Staff really do believe even after reviewing the provincial policy state, provincial planning statement twenty twenty four, that those uses are better supported in our settlement areas where we have both those hard and soft services which support residential development in that regard. And I'll go on to the next slide if you will. So based on some of the comments we heard, specifically this first one is with respect to comments we heard from staff at the municipality of West Bray. We made some changes to the policies around where you'd where you'd support contractors' yards or plumbing shops in that regard. We clarified the the terminology being skilled trades and and that those uses were to be small scale and sized. We clarified clarified some of the locational criteria around institutional uses and special event venues. And again, those are are meant to be small scale as well. As I noted, we added in that site specific exception for the Thornbury Acres development. And we updated some of the development criteria as it pertained to agrimens and residential farm cooperatives and resource based recreational uses. In support of of these development criteria, we also updated the the definitions for some of these terms in in the back of the plan. Go on to the next slide here. And so as we get into the the planning policy and
And you're after lunch today.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden, and good afternoon, members of council. I'm not used to saying that. Um, yeah, thank you for your patience. And and what we have before us is is maybe the exciting conclusion to to O P A twenty three. Uh, which uh, which first began in September of twenty twenty four. And and so just as a bit of a background, oh, I'll just uh, let the slides catch up there, but I'm sure they're coming any second here now. Actually, I can just get going. It's it's all just words anyway. Um, on the slides, I don't mean the hollow words. Um, sorry, digging myself a hole here. So the the county official plan was approved in in twenty nineteen, and it's been updated a number of times since then. Uh, what's councils maybe most used to seeing is is the updates that come through privately initiated official plan amendments. So those would be uh, developers or residents initiating an official plan amendment. Um, but we have done a few that are are county initiated as well. And and sort of the genesis behind uh, official plan amendment number twenty three uh, is to clarify some of the policies primarily in the county's rural designation. Um, there were a few policies in there and and some permitted uses that at the time when uh, the province approved the county's official plan in twenty nineteen uh, seemed well crafted and 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 seemed like they would serve the county well. Um, but quite frankly, we've had some questions on some of those and and we've had some um, some misinterpretations uh, on on some of those policies. So we looked to uh, to update the county official planet through O P A twenty three uh, to clarify some of those policies. Uh, official plan amendment number twenty three is not a fulsome consistency exercise with the the provincial planning statement. No doubt, we've considered the provincial planning statement, but it's much more broad than just the royal uses. And as council may be aware and and was in the twenty twenty five budget, uh, the county is updating its growth management strategy right now. And the growth manager's growth management strategy is that document that looks twenty five to thirty years in the future uh, to look at what our our population and employment growth projections will be. And for the first time this year, uh, the the province has has structured it such that we're formally also assessing the Ministry of Finance's population projections in that regard. So staff fully anticipate, once that growth management strategy is updated, uh, there will be a need for further updates to the county official plan. Uh, one of the things that it will help tell us is is whether or not we have adequate land uh, availability and supply to support our future growth needs. Or whether or not there needs to be growth in in any of our settlement areas in that regard. Uh, and and so if you like, this official plan amendment number twenty three is a bit of an interim amendment, uh, laser focused on our rural policies. And and at some point in the future, post that growth management strategy update, uh, we would be looking to do a more fulsome uh, consistency exercise with the provincial planning statement twenty twenty four in that regard. Okay. Oh, that's great. Well, thank you for for filling in there. Uh, if I could go to the next slide, that would be great. Um, and so within the scope of of the official plan amendment, there's no mapping changes uh, proposed in the policy. So we're not changing any of the rural lands to agricultural or vice versa. We're not updating the hazard lands or anything of that nature. Uh, we're also not changing any of our settlement area policies. So strictly speaking, uh, this official plan amendment affects seven of our nine municipalities, because both the town of Hanover and city of On Sound are entirely in the primary settlement area. And as I said, it's focused on the rural, the rural policies. Uh, more specifically, we're looking at some of the permitted uses in rural, uh, and we're also looking at some of the development criteria uh, that back up those permitted uses. There are two very minor changes to the agricultural policies. One was due to an existing error whereby one section of the plan read one way with respect to aggregates in uh, the agricultural designation and another section read another way. Uh, and and the second change in the the agricultural designation is simply to uh, align the agricultural policies with new policies that are being updated in the rural designation. Uh, this is not a radical rewrite of of the 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 philosophy behind the rural designation. Uh, this really is a refinement in that regard. Uh, one of the things we do need to stress, and this was stressed back in the initial presentation in September and also at the public meeting on November seventh, uh, is O P A twenty three would not apply to existing applications that are already in process. If approved by county council at a later date, it would apply on a go forward basis should there be no appeals. Uh, but it doesn't apply to those applications that are are already before uh, county and municipal councils in that regard. So if I go on to the next slide, please refer. Thank you. And so as I mentioned, we did have a uh, public meeting on November seventh. Uh, some of you were in attendance for that meeting. Um, we've had comments both in writing and and through the public meeting from from a number of of public bodies and some members of of the public and developers in that regard. We heard from the Grand River and Ottawa Saga Conservation Authorities, we heard from Belkenda and Virg Gas, uh, staff at the municipality West Gray, uh, a planning firm M H B C Planning on behalf of their client Thornbury Acres. And we also heard from Koby Engineering, and I'll get into a summary of those comments in just a second. Uh, the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing didn't comment on O P A twenty three, but we did have a chat with their staff uh, based on some of the comments we received and based on trying to clarify uh, some of the interpretation uh, matters with respect to the provincial planning statement twenty twenty four. And so, uh, as as was noted in the motion, uh, the comments were very useful to the O P A twenty three process and and have resulted in some changes in in the final O P A. That's before council uh, versus that version that was initially presented at uh, in the September uh, twenty twenty four and at the public meetings. We'll go over some of those changes in a second. If we could go on to the next slide here, please. Um, with respect to the comments that were received, there is a detailed summary in the uh, in the staff report along with a a staff uh, response to each of those comments, but we'll just give a very high level uh, summary just for the purpose of the presentation. Uh, there was no concerns or objections from both uh, from Enbridge, Bell, uh, Ottawa Saga Valley Conservation Authority and uh, Grand River Conservation Authority. Uh, West Gray staff had some very useful uh, suggestions for some mi- minor policy changes. Uh, just to clarify uh, some of the policies in official plan amendment number twenty three and and to clarify some of the intent in that regard. Um, we did hear concerns from M H B C Planning over the impact on existing applications, that being their client Thornbury Acres and some of the policies with respect to the residential farm cooperatives. Uh, in response to those comments, we have added a site specific exception in the residential farm cooperative policies with respect to the Thornbury Acres development. That's that's already in process. Strictly speaking, that exception didn't, you know, arguably a hundred percent need to be added, because it's 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 already clear that this only applies on a go forward basis. But just to make that a hundred percent crystal clear, we did add in that say specific exception. Uh, we also heard some comments from Koby Engineering, uh, who 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 put forward the idea that there should be broader permitted uses in uh, the county's rural designation. Uh, specifically, they said the county's rural designation should permit modular home parks and and that they're a a very attainable form of housing uh, that could be considered across the countryside where they could be serviced appropriately. I'm going to respond to that further in just a second, but I just wanted to flag that for council. Uh, and they also had some concerns with respect to some of the limitations that were being placed on residential development associated with resource based recreational uses. And uh, they had some concerns with the the, uh, as they call it, the blanket ban on plans of subdivision and and condominium in the rural designation. And I'll say on a number of these fronts, the 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 subdivisions condominiums, this isn't new to official plan amendment number twenty three. Uh, the county official plan already doesn't permit uh, subdivisions and condominiums as of right in the rural designation uh, with the exception of agrimens. Uh, and and so this is just refining those policies. Um, similar to some of the comments we heard on on Linda's report today, uh, the the county wants to provide rural areas uh, that that are um, first and foremost, supporting our our resource based uses in terms of farming, aggregate uses, forestry. We also want healthy natural environment, and we want a diversified rural economy uh, in in the rural areas of Gray County. Uh, so there is limited residential uh, development allowed in in those rural areas. Uh, but we're not looking to open these up to large scale residential developments in the forms of plans of subdivision and condominium. Uh, staff really do believe even after reviewing the provincial policy state, provincial planning statement twenty twenty four, that those uses are better supported in our settlement areas where we have both those hard and soft services uh, which support residential development in that regard. And I'll go on to the next slide if you will. Um, so based on some of the comments we heard, uh, specifically this first one is with respect to comments we heard from staff at the municipality of West Gray. Uh, we made some changes to the policies around uh, where you'd where you'd support contractors' yards or plumbing shops in that regard. Uh, we clarified uh, uh, the the terminology being skilled trades and and that those uses were to be small scale and sized. Uh, we clarified clarified some of the locational criteria around institutional uses and special event venues. And again, uh, those are are meant to be small scale as well. Um, as I noted, we added in that site specific exception for the Thornbury Acres development. And we updated some of the development criteria as it pertained to agrimens and residential farm cooperatives and resource based recreational uses. In support of of these development criteria, we also updated the the definitions uh, for some of these terms in in the back of the plan. We go on to the next slide here. Um, and so as we get into the the planning policy analysis, again, this this is a refinement. This isn't a radical rethink. Uh, the the official plan amendment number twenty three is not touching any of the lands in the Niagara Scartment Plan area. Uh, such the county plan will continue to conform to the Niagara Scartment Plan, and furthermore, we're not touching any of our settlement area policies. Um, there are some sections of the provincial planning statement that have been pointed out to us uh, by some individuals uh, in in the name of uh, supporting broader forms of residential development across the countryside and and in in rural areas. And with respect to that, I'll say that the provincial planning statement is written to apply to all municipalities across Ontario. And 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 the scope of rural rural municipalities across Ontario is very different. We have some rural municipalities in Ontario that don't have a single settlement area. So I think one of the the general threats of of the P P S twenty twenty four um, was to allow for some development in those areas uh, such that uh, tho- those uh, municipalities could could have new housing development in that regard. Um, but that's not the case for any of our nine member municipalities. All of our nine municipalities have at least one, if not multiple settlement areas. Uh, so through official plan amendment number twenty three and the existing county official plan policy, staff really strove to uh, strike a balance between uh, the types of development that would be permitted in 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 our rural areas and and the types of development that might be better suited to our settlement areas. And there are specific sections in in the provincial pl- planning statement which read growth may be directed to rural lands, including where municipalities do not have a settlement area. Uh, and and similarly, rural areas um, and more specifically rural settlement areas shall be the focus of growth. Um, and so while we understand where some other planners might uh, might see further latitude in these policies and and look to open up the rural designation to plans of subdivision or things like modular home parks. We really do think in order to provide that balance, uh, the county does need to take a bit of a restrictive approach, which is consistent with our our existing approach in that regard. With respect to modular homes, definitely, we agree that that they can be a more attainable form of housing. So we'd love to see them in our settlement areas, whether that be our secondary settlement areas, our inland lakes and shoreline, even some of our primary settlement areas. On an individual basis or as an additional residential unit, they would be completely fine in in uh, the rural designation or the agricultural designation. Um, but a larger scale modular home park like three hundred units or four hundred units are something we don't see as necessarily being compatible with rural service levels in that regard. And as such, that the direction in O P A twenty three uh, is is to continue to to uh, direct those uh, uses to settlement areas. And maybe we could just go to the next slide. So there's a number of reasons why we would we would continue to direct those to settlement areas. Um, one is to to strengthen our settlement areas where municipalities and the county have have already made significant infrastructure investments in those areas. And as I said, they have the the hard and soft services to support growth. If we suddenly start allowing for subdivisions all across the countryside, um, it makes those twenty acre, thirty acre properties in a secondary settlement area uh, less attractive. If you can simply put, just just to build those those subdivisions anywhere. Um, we also see greater instances of conflict when we start building or introducing large new non-farm developments in the countryside. Uh, conflict with farm uses, conflict with aggregate uses, conflict with sometimes the natural environment or forestry. Uh, and and so by by, you know, arguably saying no to one thing in one location, we're saying yes to something else. So we're saying yes to supporting our farmers. We're saying yes to supporting our aggregate operations and our other resource based uses that we need across the countryside. The the county's rural designation still does have a fair bit of flexibility. We still permit severances just as 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 we have for a number of years. We submit all forms of agricultural uses, including agriculture related uses on farm diversified uses. We support resource based recreational uses, so you can still uh, uh, do things like open a campground or 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 have those tourist amenities across the countryside. Uh, we support uh, buildings and yards associated with skilled trades, as we talked about earlier. And we are still supporting residential farm cooperatives on and agrimens on a scaled back basis. And so one of the things we've we've learned is is uh, is is um, there can be different definitions of those terms and different interpretations. Uh, so we're looking at clarifying some of those interpretations. We're also clarifying the policies around small scale event venues. Um, you know, we've seen many proposals over the years where someone uh, would buy a farm and look to open up what we affectionately call a wedding barn or 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 turn the drive shed into a wedding facility. And and we see on a certain scale, there's there's a use for those across the countryside and particularly in the rural designation rather than the agricultural designation. Um, but there needs to be those limitations on scale, so as not to uh, take over the agricultural operation or to create uh, nuisances or impacts on on neighbor and farm uses. So they wouldn't require an official plan amendment if they're small scale, uh, but they would still require zoning amendment at the municipal level. So we'll go on to the next slide here. Um, so with that, staff do believe that the proposed changes through official plan amendment number twenty three have regard for matters of provincial interest under the Planning Act. They are consistent with the provincial filing statement twenty twenty four. They continue to conform to the Niagara Scartment Plan, and they align with the overall goals and objectives of the county official plan uh, as as expressed first by by council in in two thousand seventeen eighteen, leading up to the the um, um, approval of that twenty nineteen plan as and has continued to be communicated by council uh, through your actions and decisions going forward. As I noted, a further consistency exercise with P P S twenty twenty four is likely due uh, following that growth management strategy update. With that, we'll go on to the next slide and and the warden read out the the recommendation at the beginning. But essentially, it's to to receive the report, to acknowledge the the wonderful written and oral submissions that were received and and to uh, direct staff if appropriate to prepare the bylaw for county councils uh, uh, consideration in a few weeks' time. That's all I have at the stage, but be certainly happy to take any questions if there are any.
Okay, thank you. So I'll look around the room first. For questions. Okay, so we're going to begin with Council McQueen and then to Council Nielsen.
Thank you, Madam Warden, and just thank you for the report, Scott. Um, just a couple of things, and I know it was raised before with regards to um, different types of development and the rural lands. Now we, one thing we know is rural lands aren't for intensive farming. Because farming has to be on A class. Uh, and there is rural lands that aren't farmland or modular or rural lands or 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 um, could be anything by the farm. We just had a town hall meeting a week ago, and we have, obviously, we have four arenas. We have seven community centers in our municipality of Great Highlands. And it was suggested that one was repurposed for some other reason, would they drive that far to do those with the other ring? And they said, no. We like to come to our community hub, which is the arena, the community center. They don't want to drive, they don't. So the this, you know, uh, and I understand where you had pushed the more development toward the urban setting, centers and stuff like that, understandably. But there are certain parts of community living or, well, it's about community and rural living that, you know, yeah, it doesn't include farming and all that stuff. But there's a bit of a, it's an interesting thing around rural Ontario and and rural lands where you can have, well, we call it communities within our community of communities. And and that, again, those arenas and community centers become that hub, whether it's for an agricultural fair or all that stuff. And I'm I'm not I don't need to say anymore of that. But there is this attachment to your community of your area. And 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 sometimes the feeling of of expanding that or from from a housing perspective, they don't want to go here. They want to stay here. And and that's what I'm just trying to say in a sense of, it's a different and 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 maybe you wouldn't experience, not everybody would experience unless you lived it or or heard about it. But I just know at our town hall, it was suggested that could could one of our four arenas, and 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 again, our four arenas came from four municipalities that merged into Gray Highlands. But there's still community hubs of those certain areas that people attract to. And again, community hubs was something that was communicated a few years back, even from the provincial government. So uh, I'm not, I'm not debating anything. I'm just saying that there is a little bit of a different community feel when they live in in the rural part of of Gray Highlands and Gray County. And they just don't want to go to an urban setting or that type of thing. They they feel attached to that area. And it's getting harder and harder. And it's, it also comes back to the the point about supporting our arenas and supporting our community centers defenders and and, you know, the local churches and and the schools. Like it's, it's about population as well and maintain that population. So it just for us, I'll leave it at that. Uh, agrimens, I I'm glad you're still sort of saying that could be a possibility. And I guess the other thing, Scott, is if a proposal comes forward, you know, there can be an amendment to the plan as well, but can come forward and and that sort of thing. So uh, I'll leave it at that. But it there is just a little bit different flavor in the rural part of on the rural lands.
Um, so Director Taylor, did you want to address the 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 pattern of hamlets, the settlement areas in terms of the hamlets that would be across our communities? Thank you.
Yeah, through you, Madam Warren, and and thank you for your your comments, uh, Council McQueen. And 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 the one thing, um, you know, maybe I I I misspoke a little bit, but when I speak to directing development towards our settlement areas, um, we're directing development towards all of our settlement areas. So certainly, we have those, if you like, higher order settlement areas where you have um, full municipal water and sewer services. Um, but we also have what what the county official plan designates as our secondary settlement areas. And and the one thing I'll I'll say is that we've seen a real resurgence in recent years in interest in developing in those secondary settlement areas. And 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 so, Council McQueen, you know, I know you you raised this comment, but just to to single out Gray Highlands here. Uh, currently, we have subdivision applications underway in Feversham, in Eugene, in Eugene, in Rockland and in Maxwell. Um, and and so when I look at those communities, uh, you know, I think you're bang on. Those are community hubs. And in some cases, um, individuals may identify with those communities more than they would Gray Highlands or Gray County. You know, that's that's their their role, so to speak. And and so we want to do everything we can to to strengthen those areas. We certainly don't want to forget about our rural or agricultural areas. We want to to uh, make sure that people can still live and 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 work and earn a living in those areas. Um, but for the larger scale residential developments, that's where you know, we think there's still merit in directing them to the secondary settlement areas, the primary settlement areas, some of our escarpment uh, um, recreational designations in that regard, because we do see uh, more services and mendies. And and then with respect to your comments on on agriculture, no doubt, there's there's a wide variety of of land capabilities across the county. Um, some of our rural areas are still very productive agricultural lands. We have class one, two and three soils there. But you're right, there are some some uh, lands that are very rocky or in some cases wet or or other conditions or steep um, that that, you know, wouldn't be the best for agriculture. In some cases, those might be great for aggregates or or other types of resource use or forestry. Um, but again, it's it it's supporting those broad spectrum of uses from the resource uses to the the uh, the recreational and the residential in that regard.
Okay, thank you. We better move on. So I'm going to go to Council Nielsen next.
Thank you very much, Warden, much as often. Uh, just a quick one, and similar to, I guess, the the train of thought Council McQueen had. I'm just wondering if Scott, you can help me understand planning perspectives, so good planning policies versus understanding the customer base. So when like, when um, you're giving your report and suggesting that like a mobile park home would be uh, subdivision would be great in our settlement areas, I did laugh to myself thinking of where would I fit that in the in the scope of Hanover? And how would that play out? It probably wouldn't fit. But then your comment about secondary settlement areas does work. I'm just wondering if when we consider planning options and planning policies in theory about the fact that it is logical to drive uh, settlement growth towards the settlement areas, how do we take into account the uh, types of individuals we're trying to attract and the the difference in um, mentalities? Be it somebody who wants to live in a urban setting versus somebody who wants to live in a rural setting versus someone who wants to live in that uh, maybe more even rural or more country setting.
That's through you, Madam Warren. Thank you for your question, Council Nielsen. Uh, try to keep this brief. This could be a very long, a very long answer, and maybe it's an offline discussion. Um, we we do try to take into account the needs of of all of our community and all of our visitors. And and we talk about this quite often with respect to housing, you know, housing for all. Um, as much as we talk about affordable housing, you know, we still need those larger homes for larger families or larger homes for for those with more affluence in our community. And not to say that that one is is better or worse than the other, um, but we need the broad spectrum. And and so when we look at uh, any planning policies, one of the first ways of of sort of ground truthing those policies is is the feedback we get from residents, from visitors and from developers. And 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 further to some of the the questions and comments we have heard this morning uh, with respect to the future really development metrics. Um, you know, staff can dream up whatever they wish in the office. But if if you've got builders and people with lived on the ground experience saying, there's no way I could ever build that, then then there's really no point in 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 uh, putting those into policy or into into supporting documents in that regard. And and so what it does mean is as we work through these official plan policies, there are changes over time. And back to Council McQueen's uh, comments, yeah, there there can be amendments to the the plan as well. Um, so we do our best to to present a a balanced perspective, a a perspective that will support uh, residents and future users throughout the county and throughout our communities. One of the other things we also think very heavily about is is the different stages of life. Um, so where you are when you might be looking at your first starter home or a family home um, versus those units that might be needed or the 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 land use supports that might be needed when you're looking to downsize. Uh, and and um, you know, those are all things that go into it. And and you know, what we've heard over the years is is some of those rural homes and rural uses are fantastic for folks um, that have the mobility and have the affluence to own their own vehicles and everything else. Um, but they're not as great for for our older adults or or people without uh, access to a personal automobile. So again, there's there's that balance of of allowing people that lifestyle choice. No doubt, lots of people choose to move to Gray because of its beautiful landscape and and, you know, supply of homes in the rural area. Um, but we also need to think about the longer term health of those those uh, settlement areas in terms of the hamlets and the primary.
Okay, thank you. And with my mantra has always been housing for all ages and stages of life. That also includes transition. So residents can remain in a community and then downsize or change their housing according to their needs as as they age in that community. Age up and age down. Okay, so with that, then we'll look for more comments in around the room, looking virtually. Okay, Director Taylor, I don't see any further hands up for you. So thank you again for illuminating illuminating those extra details for us to consider. It has been moved and seconded. So at this point in time, I will call the vote, all those in favor. And that motion is carried. Thank you very much, Director Taylor. And next we will move on to item seventy, which is, I'll read out the recommended uh, motion. We'll get it on the floor and then I'll invite uh, Director Hoy to address uh, comments. It's recommended that the urban road and roads exchange task force minutes of March twentieth, twenty twenty five be adopted as presented. And the following resolution contained therein be endorsed. Number one is uh, that report T R U R O six twenty five be received and that the funding model presented for the urban road and ru- rural road transfers be approved. And that a levy increase of of uh, one million, two hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and one dollars be uh, to support the funding model for the road transfers be included in the twenty twenty six draft budget for council's consideration. And that staff be directed to negotiate new road agreements with the affected municipalities in accordance with the activities in the report. And that the corresponding draft agreements come forward for consideration. May ask for a mover. Moved by Council Greg, seconded by um, Council, Council Hutchinson, number two. And uh, and of course, you're from the same municipality too. I can't even use that to to identify. Uh, okay, so it's been moved and seconded. It's on the floor for discussion. And uh, with that, we're going to begin, I believe, before we go to questions, we're going to allow Director Hoy. And then I will go to questions, uh, seeing that Council Nielsen has raised his hand.
Yeah, I'll go through the uh, presentation that we had presented. There's a couple of slides we've added, uh, just some summaries of what was talked about at the task force. So I'll go through this. I'll start with the with the urban um, exchange and then go into the world after. So this was the background of the urban, um, you know, recommending the transfer of road sections of the primary and secondary settlements, about fifty kilometers. Um, and it's it's really come out of the difficulties in dealing with multiple ownership of the urban roads. So you'll see the last line there. The disproportionate amount of time we spend um, owning, you know, being partners, owning the same uh, asset. I think everyone's heart is in the right place. Um, everyone's doing their best efforts, but it is quite difficult to be in an urban that has maybe different priorities than the county does. And uh, we own the storm sewer and the road and then the water main sanitary sidewalks, et cetera, owned by the lower tier. So it really does create a lot of issues. Um, and you'll see them here on the next page. And this was kind of the the thought behind this. So uh, just increasing efficiencies, you know, these are some of the issues that come up. You know, even if you wanted to have a parade or anything in the town, uh, some some municipality um, uh, services, that sort of thing, you always have to get a permit, just utilities, entrance permits. People get very confused when they live in On Sound and they have to get a county entrance permit. Uh, they're never very happy about it, obviously. Um, just pedestrians, you know, pedestrians are typically with the municipality. But it's a county road, so there's always that kind of confusion. But it's a county road, so there's always that kind of confusion. Just things like sidewalk maintenance, people have phoned the county thinking it's our thing. It isn't. It's the it's the municipality. So just these are all those little kind of wrinkles that keep coming up and being in the urbans. So here was just our, some of our benefits of of local management. Just, you know, people only have one person to call. A lot of times, a community has a lot of very specific concerns about building the community. They might even go through fundraising. And then next thing you know, they make a presentation to the local council who's completely supportive. And then it turns out, oh, we got asked the county and it's against our policy. So just kind of us getting out of your business really was kind of the thinking behind a lot of these. Here's the list of the urban roads to be proposed to be transferred. As you can see, there's quite a few of them and they're across many municipalities. So all the primaries and a few of the secondaries would be going back to the municipalities. So in the municipal, we met with every municipality a few times we have. And I think the important thing on this slide is probably just that second point, kind of overwhelming, kind of opinion of the ones that only had an urban, you know, download, or they were just receiving an urban road and maybe weren't weren't transferring a railroad. It just didn't feel like there was enough of a financial compensation package for them. That was pretty much unanimous that and not just even just financial. It's it's a big bunch of new tasks, right? So in in some cases, such as Hanover, the roads that we're proposing to download are the busiest ones in town. And they don't really have any other road that compares to how busy you know, Gray Road ten and Gray Road four are. So there is obviously some concern, you know, you don't want to get stuck with a bunch of work that you weren't expecting or that you can't handle, you know, and that all reflects back in level of service or a higher level of service than other roads they have. So that that was pretty much across the board for the urbans that nobody wants to get stuck with a kind of you know, a problem in the future. So I think I think that we've been very clear on that from the start. That this wasn't, you know, your typical MTO download, you're taking it and good luck, talk to you in five years. This is something we want to work on together to to come up with a a solution that we can all be happy with. So the what the change, the big change we did make was for the municipalities with urbans only. Originally, the the funder funding was tapering off towards the, you know, five years out just to get used to maybe when there was no county funding, because right now it's kind of a ten year window. So with the urbans, we just left that funding to continue to grow based on getting the same percentages as our capital plan would get here at the county, but our levy would grow for for our assets. So that's basically, and and again, every year, you know, and this is is future council funding decisions anyway. So regardless of what we say here, this is kind of our blueprint. This is how we'd be proceeding. But every budget is, you know, can be its own beast when, you know, when the times come, depending on what's going on in the world, or it's another departments. So our next steps of the urban transfers, we would be probably obviously doing the rurals and the urban many, many meetings with with the municipalities, just to figure out what the agreement would look like. And working out some maintenance support. It's in, you'll see it in the staff report. There's a list of basically, everybody needs help with plowing in the winter, with the exception of Owens Sound, who does our plowing for us. So everybody else feels like for now, because you're not going to go out and buy a new truck and have two guys with, you know, vice, you know, whenever the transfer happens. So we'd still be doing quite a few maintenance activities. But there did seem to be general consensus that the summer maintenance is where the county really, you know, to drive into Owens Sound from Chatsworth to do some animal removal is is sort of a waste of time, right? It it's not a question of necessarily manpower. It's just it's some of the time that the summer maintenance is is not near what the winter maintenance is. So everyone kind of agreed that maybe this summer, you know, we probably, you know, everyone would be fine on their own, but the winter is where the big problem is, and especially if it's a winter like this winter. So and you'll see the transfer target date for the spring of twenty six we have in here. So there's a lot of work to do between if this gets approved and and the actual transfer. But we've kind of been zeroing in that spring is kind of a good date to do any transfers, urban or rural, as far as that goes, because it's just a bit of a a let off till the winter comes. You don't want to do it the year end, January first, you know, and, you know, December thirty first, one guy's plowing it and January first, some other guy. It just creates a lot of problems. So that's kind of the 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 date we're trying to narrow in on. So I guess I'll just go on to the rural before we get any questions here. So this is about the rural roads. So basically, the road responsibility, this kind of came from the the master plan and from the official plan. So these roads that the task force evaluated, they're not really new. They've been in previous road needs studies. And I think if anything, maybe some of them have really come to the forefront that you can see why they were in the old roads needs. So they, like I said, they support growth or official plan, that point to their the changing traffic patterns. You know, everyone goes where the machine tells them to go now. So they they don't necessarily care if it's a county road. There's a, there's a lot of county roads that maybe are are a lower level of service than some of these roads that we're going to be maybe taking. So, you know, it's just having the right level of service for the right road. All of a sudden, you've got all these cars going on some township road that really can't handle it. It's it's not ideal for the traveling public. So and just the third point, a lot of these roads came out of our talks with commercial carriers and agriculture. You know, they have a director they want to get there too, right? Which which maybe the existing road network doesn't necessarily facilitate that. So here are the rural roads in question. It's narrowed down, the task force narrowed down to the four. Again, we've left the, there's dates in the report, but we're just not sure the exchange date, again, hoping for maybe spring twenty six. And just at the top of the page, there's these kind of three projects that were kind of caught in the kind of in the transition period where, you know, we felt we've already started some things with them. We just kind of didn't want to slam the door, you know, in someone before we do the handover. So there is some jobs that we'd probably carry out. In some cases, you know, Southgate's already paved the road we're taking. We would pave another lift, but it's it's in much better shape than the road we'd be giving them. So generally, we we didn't go by the ten year plan only because again, it's just a matter of timing. Some people have a lot of jobs in the ten year plan, some people don't. So we went more with a a percentage of our capital and what people own. And against rural transfers, same thing, we'd be discussing agreements on how the transfer would work, who would be responsible for what. And again, no public information sessions yet. So some of these roads that are becoming county roads are not, are becoming lower tier roads. We haven't necessarily heard from the public what people think. You know, some people appreciate or seem would appreciate the increased level of service. Other ones maybe don't want to live on a county road because they're afraid it'll get busier. So we 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 haven't really got a lot of feedback from the public yet on that. And at the discussion that task force, here here are some of the some of the things that were discussed in quite a bit of detail. Just improving service levels and efficiency. So getting rid of, you know, the multiple ownerships of the urban and maybe having the road at the appropriate level should increase efficiency. And then we'd have a lot of work to do, as I said, on transition plans, timing, the funding, maintenance of each municipality. So as as proposed in the in the motion here, it would be a one point two four million dollar levy increase, which equates to one point five six of the of the corporate levy. That would be adopted or at least considered, I guess, as a term in the twenty sixth budget. So the task force has supported the funding model and instructed staff to present the agreements to member municipalities with draft agreements to be presented when finalized. So you know, the agreement, there is going to be specific things in the agreement. But I think the funding model is how we're going to move forward. You know, if someone decided that they wanted to do it and and still receive all the funding they received, I don't know if this that's up for this committee to decide, but we were going to progress under kind of the the format as directed here. And there's the motion. And again, we're just looking to have a decision on moving forward. Because we, our original intention, of course, one of the, one of the many was to say of the election cycle and we're kind of fallen behind on that a bit, maybe. So we're really hoping to keep this thing moving at first.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Hoy. So we're going to begin with Council Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Matrasoff. And when this came forth before, I had questions and concerns over the concession twelve upload and how that would affect the capital project and the costing. And I was asking questions about, you know, we're offering money down to the lower tier municipalities. And was there some similar reciprocal question coming from the lower tier tiers in what's being brought back up to the county? I look at this urban road exchange selfishly from the county perspective, which is, in my eyes, the goal would be to realign our ten year capital plan and our asset management plan to be sustainable and deliverable from a county perspective. The one road that just seems to, when I review the the committee meeting minutes and the committee meeting topics, that seems to really sway whether or not this is a financial benefit to the county itself, seems to be that concession twelve. And I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater and say, I can't support the way it's written right now because of the costing and that capital expense and long term asset management plan for the county, when the majority of what's being presented makes sense and is logical. The urban road exchange, I find the premises that you've brought forward as to the benefits. And there are some, obviously, the long term costs and stuff to the lower tiers, but from the county perspective, there's a benefit to getting out of the way within the urban centers. And so my instinct is to have that question be specifically, does this committee, does council as a whole support that exchange of the concession twelve? For myself, the financial cost doesn't justify the benefit that I might prevent or present, sorry. So I guess my question to you and what I've asked staff already is, what's the difference in the costing if we brought brought concession twelve out of this conversation? In my questions for staff earlier today, that seems to be hard to answer on the spot, and I can respect that. So if for for brevity's sake, I'll move the motion that I was discussing with the clerk, which is to the motion and the corresponding resolution contained herein be deferred pending further information from staff on the impacts of removing concession twelve and Gray Road nine from the proposed exchange, so that we can get the information as to what is the cost including concession twelve in this discussion? And what is the cost not including concession twelve into this discussion?
Okay, thank you. Before there's any discussion on on that motion to defer, I'm going to need to see if there's a seconder for that. Looking for a seconder. It's been seconded by Council McQueen. So it's now on the floor for discussion. So just, Madam Clerk, did you catch that? Are you able to put that up on the screen? Oh, it's already up on the screen behind me. Excellent. Okay, so this motion is up on the screen for discussion. So there shouldn't be any further discussion on the main motion until this one has been debated and voted on. So we'll go to Council Greg.
Thank you, Warden, and through you. I'd just like to note, I moved that motion as committee chair with tremendous apprehension. There was considerable discussion about forwarding that type of a cost increase to budget and finance considerations for two thousand twenty six. I'm just, I'm wondering if your amending motion here might be a little too specific by itemizing it to concession twelve and Gray Road nine. Whereas as a committee, we might benefit from more extensive information as a whole. So I'm going to think traffic count data, just right off the top of my head. Because if we have all the correct information before us, it might be demonstrated that concession twelve might be the the one of the four that might be the best one to move forward with, over and above the other three. So we don't have the data right now in front of committee that might allow us to look at all the options to respond to your concern about the the total cost increase that we'd be considering here. That that's my only concern is what if you look at that entire map and and transportation route data and the means of travel that people are are exercising? That that's the best one to move forward with, and we're precluding it right now from from being further looked at. Because traffic count data could show that, could demonstrate that's a far better one to move even with the cost than the Gray Road twenty five project, for instance. So I guess I'll put it back to you if you're concerned with it being that specific.
So the reason for the deferral in my eyes is is the financial impact on the county council and county itself. So the motion here is to defer pending more information on these two sections. It doesn't, I guess, to yourself, Council Greg, it doesn't expand to ask for traffic count data on all the roads, specifically more over the information on what does it look like to have it in and not in. So my deferral here is solely based on the financial. I guess if county doesn't support this deferral for maybe this premise, or you can make an amendment to it to request more information than dish the financial aspect. When reviewing the documents that the count that the task force received, my stance is moreover, the financial implications.
Okay, thank you. And we continue to discuss only the amendment that is up on the screen. I'll ask if there are other comments. We'll go read the motions. Okay, some of the members can't see that motion because it's not on all the screens. So not all the screens are are in sync with each other. So, Madam Clerk, could you please read that that motion for us?
That the motion and corresponding resolution contained therein be deferred pending further information from staff on the impacts of removing concession twelve and Gray Road nine from the proposed exchange.
Okay, was that good, Council Hutchinson? And it's now on the screen behind you as well. Thank you. I appreciate that. Did you have a comment then, Council Hutchinson? No? Okay. We'll go to Council McQueen next.
I don't know if this could be an amended motion to the amending motion. But deferral. Then I guess I can't add. My point is, is, I guess, and and through you, Madam Chair, is I think it's very important that this whole idea does move forward in a public information session to get that feedback. I mean, if this motion was to be supported and get more information. But I really, really, really feel that we need, and it's talked about going to the public. And if you have those timelines, I really think that, I don't know how that can be written in this motion or separate motion, that we do go to the public. I know that Morgan can do that. You know, like, we we we're going to the public with regards to our planning piece. We're going to a public on other smaller things like the tree cutting bylaw. This is a major, major thing in the county of Gray and the shifting. I just, I I think it would be really in our best interest to move forward with that two hundred and later. And I don't know how that can be crafted, if this was a deferral that gets more information, but is that a separate, separate motion, Madam Chair? Or like, I don't know, I'm I'm seeking some advice on that, because I really think we should be moving on a public process.
Okay, thank you. What I can clarify is that page, slide eleven, does refer to the fact that one of the next steps would be to have the public information sessions. So if there is a deferral to get more information, then that will defer the public information session that's already scheduled. So we do need to keep, because this is, this is a motion to defer, not the main motion. I I can't see something being altered on this one. I don't think there's such a thing as a friendly amendment that could be added to a motion to defer. But if this one fails, then it is possible for another motion to defer. Or would that be a reconsideration? Madam Clerk. But we already have public information sessions already, already in the queue. There's no Okay, we're going to go to the CAO for clarification.
One of the things that we talked about at the last committee meeting was that if this moved forward, it would be very important to work with all of the people who were affected by the changes, right? I think everybody understands that changed the ownership of the roads, then that means people's addresses would change, et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot of us service levels would change. But those information sessions have not been scheduled. That was to be a future thing if it went forward. What I'm hearing from you, Council McQueen, is that your preference would be more of like a public information center type session where we were seeking input from the public prior to making a a formal decision at that. a a formal decision at that at this table. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, and it keeps it going. It keeps it going. I mean, we just went out to O P eight twenty-three and we got public comments. This is a big deal in my mind. So my point here, and that's why I wondered, and that's why I was trying to seek some guidance, is could there be an amendment to this motion that says, but the public, but a public information session would still continue while you gather this information. That's that's sort of what I'm saying is, it, maybe this defers for more information, but it carries on a process that allows to get that public feedback. That that's my, that was sort of where I was coming from. So you don't, so you don't completely lose everything.
Okay, now I have heard, though, another concern that's been put forth in the discussion that this this particular motion here is too specific about one particular section. So I think to preserve the integrity, I'm looking at that we're going to need to vote on this one the way it is. If it fails, it would be possible. I I checked in with the clerk and I don't believe it will be a reconsideration if the deferral were for a different reason, such as moving ahead with Public Information Center. So I would like to go over to the Deputy C A O at this point.
Thank you. And further to this, and just speaking to this motion, this before, before this committee, I think it'd be helpful from a staff perspective to at least know what's what's being considered or what's being proposed as part of the exchanges, so that we can have some some good dialogue and feedback and consultation with the public. So if there's a question mark on any of these road exchanges, the one being highlighted here as part of this motion, I think from a staff perspective, it'd be good to know is council generally supportive of this being still considered as part of the exchanges before we have those public consultation sessions?
Okay, so Deputy C A O, then then am I understanding you correctly that you would be, you would hope that if there is another motion that's put forth in order to defer long enough to have public information sessions, that you would be seeking guidance for direction for staff such as naming the fact that it would be that the further information would be on all four of the potential uploads, that kind of. Okay, he is nodding and and agreeing, correct. Okay. So we still have this one here on the floor that we will need to vote on. So Counselor Body, comment?
Speaking to the motion on the floor, I don't support deferring. Staff have been working on this for ten years. Am I right? A number of years, we've had a committee working on it. I also don't favor starting to carve out certain roads. I I think because the committee's worked on it, staff have worked on it, I support moving ahead, looking at all of it and seeing where we get to, not not A, deferring, or B, looking at carving out certain roads at this point. So I won't support this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments regarding the motion that we have here on the screen to defer with the reference to that particular piece of land? Okay, Counselor McQueen, you have already spoken on this. So is there one additional point that you wish to rephrase?
So on the meeting of September sixth, twenty twenty four, staff brought forward a recommendation with regards to looking at the three the three particular roads, and I have to go back to my report, and that was exchange South Gate Side Road eleven for Gray Road fourteen, exchange Ben X Sullivan Town Line for Gray Road twenty-five, and transfer concession five Derby and concession road six to Gray County. That was the recommendation. It said, then it further said that staff be directed to undertake further consultation and investigation regarding the proposed exchange for West Gray concession twelve for Gray Road nine due to the cost of reconstruction of concession twelve. And then there was in those minutes, it was on the floor, and then there was amended motion to the main motion that said that the motion be amended to strike out clause three and add West Gray concession twelve for Gray Road nine transfer to clause two. So in the original report in September sixth, this wasn't on the list. It was added. And staff even had concerns about the cost in the report dated September sixth, twenty twenty four. So this is not coming out of nowhere. This has, there is issues around the true costs of this addition, and even staff weren't sure. So there is some basis to why this resolution is on the floor today. Thank you, Madam.
Okay, thank you, Counselor McQueen. Director Hoy, did you wish to address any of that? We have, of course, all of council has reviewed minutes, so we are familiar with that information.
Yeah, just what Council McQueen said. Yeah, I, you know, I remember that meeting quite well, of course, and it wasn't in the original motion because it is, you know, it it's the biggest of the of the transfers. But at that time, the task force, you know, seemed pretty overwhelmingly in response of moving forward with the four roads as originally picked out. So it feels like we had that discussion then at the task force, and they were supporting it twelve. You know, we would relieve it out because of the expense, but it has a lot of merit, too. So it's a tough decision, obviously, but yeah, that was addressed in September task force. And we've been working under that premise ever since.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, Counselor DeBreen?
Thank you. And through you, just so that I'm clear, that at any point in time, if we were, if this fails, if at any point in time before the twenty twenty six budget, everything is still, the costs are still up in the air for approval. Things can change. They can be pulled out, they can be put in. The cost may go up, the the public may not be supportive of any of these transfers. And it might be council's decision to unfortunately, throw the baby out with the bathwater, but the ten years of planning and talking and staff time, sorry, staff time and and the committee's time is has been worthwhile. We're, we haven't even had public engagement yet to find out, is this something that our that our communities want? So to defer it longer delays the public engagement. To let this amendment fail and go back to the main motion will allow things to continue to go forward the consultation. And we still have a final say when it comes back with agreements. Yeah, it's not working for us. It's too much money. It's not going to work in this year's budget. We'll delay it. So I just want to understand that there are, all of the options are still up for debate. We just need to move forward and get more information. Madam.
Okay, thank you. I'll put that to, now Deputy C A O has his hand up. Director Hoy, did you want me to start with? Okay. Deputy C A O.
Thank you. And through you, Warden. Yeah, the I I would agree with Counselor DeBreen's comments in terms of the the intent of this particular motion or the the original motion that was supported by task force was to move forward to those next steps. And and from a staff perspective, we obviously didn't want to move forward to those next steps unless there was at least some general agreement from council to proceed to those those public consultation sessions. But also start drafting up those agreements and having further discussions with each of the municipalities of what those agreements will look like. So again, so we, we would, we were looking for whether this council is generally supportive of what the task force is recommending prior to going to those next steps. Back to this particular motion is before is again, this being part of one of the exchanges, rural road exchanges, we would like to have, from a staff perspective, that direction from council of whether or not this is one of the roads that's being proposed to be part of the overall mix of exchanges and road transfers. And and so again, that will help inform us what are those next steps in terms of what agreements we're drafting, what 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 public consultation will look like and what what information then do we need to bring back to this council as part of those budget considerations for the twenty twenty six budget based on the direction that's being provided here today?
Okay, thank you. Other questions on this particular one, we'll go over here to Counselor, Alternate Counselor Hutchinson.
Yeah, so if I can just give my perspective as being a resident of this area and speaking maybe behalf of Mr. Echols, who isn't here today, I'm sure he would have something to say about this, this issue. The, I I think this, I I would like to personally, I I would like to see it stay in there given the amount of time and effort that's gone into this. And my understanding of the goal of the county to have east, west, and north, south through fairs. And I think this road in particular is a very important road. Actually, I was on it last night, going from from West Gray all the way over to Mile May. It it's a very well-traveled road, and I think it's one that the county would benefit a lot from having it in there and getting the public input. I think that's the important piece, as as we've mentioned over here, that it's going to go to the public and the public are going to have their say. And I think it's one that's, that's very important. Yes, it's to be a benefit for us to not have it in our in our municipality, but I think for the county's perspective, it would be very, very important for them to have this road. So I would like to see it stay in and get as much information as you can going forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll go over to Counselor Nielsen.
Thank you very much, Warden Matrasov. Similar to what Deputy C A O Shurter said, the premise here is to decide, is to get a yes or no from this county as a whole, not just the task force, whether or not we support continuing with this project. In my eyes, this one proposes a significant financial cost to the county and that that cost doesn't outweigh, or the benefits don't outweigh that cost. And so this is why I bring it forward, to tell staff to continue to do the work and continue to present it as if this is going to carry through to have four, three, four, or five months from now, this project not move forward because of the costing from this particular road and that the balance change that this road brings, to me, is a waste of staff's time. So that's why I'm looking for this question. If this deferral fails, that's fine. Then I do have just a request to bring out this section as a different question to be voted on separately, so that there is firm confirmation whether or not this council is willing to move forward with the costs, especially with this road change.
Okay, any other discussion? Yes, we'll go to Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Could I call the vote, please?
I don't see any further hands that are raised, so I do think we are ready to call the vote on this this motion here that's on the screen to defer. So this is only on this motion to defer. So I will ask all those in favor. And those opposed? And that motion fails. Okay, so we're back to the main motion at this point in time. Unless there is another motion in that is not a reconsideration, it may contain a deferral, but it will have to be for a different reason. Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden. I'd like to make a little bit of a wording change, an amendment to the main motion. And this goes back to the comments that Counselor DeBreen has been talking was about. It makes sense. But in the motion currently, it says the funding model presented for the urban road and rural road transfer be approved. I would like to change that to be received in principle and that a public information session be held. And all the other stuff can stay there because it still talks about the budget and everything else, but it's received in principle. So the concept maybe is received. But it allows that a public information session be held. The public information session isn't in the wording of the motion. And it can, it goes back to that part, but I think it allows it to move on to that next step. So received in principle, which means this body sort of, okay, it makes sort of sense. But it's not approving it as approved. And the word approved means it's done. So I'd like to make those changes if I can get a second for that.
Okay, I'll look. I see Counselor Nielsen is is seconding it. So that is now on the floor for discussion. I'm going to get that put up on the screen. And I'll ask the clerks to read it out, please, because I can't see it in front of me.
So the effect of the motion would be that the motion be amended by removing the word approved in the relevant clause and inserting receive in principle and that public information sessions be held.
Okay, so it's now on the floor for discussion. I'm going to put a question of clarification to Director Hoy and Deputy C A O. Because there was reference to hosting the public information sessions, we've heard from the C A O. We have to be clear on what it is that we've already intended to do versus what would be different with this particular motion. So may I put that question to staff before I open it for discussion? Deputy C A O?
I think this would provide enough direction, I guess, for staff to be able to identify that at this stage, still the urban road transfers and the four rural road exchanges would be part of the roads that we'd be looking for public consultation feedback from. So I think that's that's sufficient. Yeah, so I I have no questions or concerns with respect to that particular matter.
Okay, so it's now on the floor for discussion. We'll go to Counselor DeBreen.
Thank you, Warden Matrasov. And just for, to seek some clarity, the public information sessions, while I agree, are important and and I'm glad to see that we're going to start scheduling those. But part of the presentation was also to start developing those agreements. The resolution says start developing those agreements. Can they be held consecutively, sorry, concurrently? So that we're not holding up one for the other. We don't have to have the agreement in place. We're, you know, these, this is an exploration. Was that the original intent of the information sessions, or was the, were the information sessions planned for once we're close to having an agreement?
Question to staff. We'll go to the Deputy C A O.
I think the the original plan was always that those would run concurrently. Like, we could still work on some of those draft templates of of what those agreements would look like. Continue to have some further discussions with each of the municipalities, while at the same time having some of those public information sessions about what is being considered here.
Okay. And we'll go to Counselor McQueen.
Thank you, Madam Warden. If you look at the report of March twentieth, twenty twenty five, it says here that the original significant concern came from those within the rural transfer component, noting that received inadequate or inequity in the finances, sorry, financial benefit being provided compared to those who had won. These municipalities were the Town of Blue Mountains, Hanover, Meaford, Own Sound, and Gray Highlands. Since this, since that, and we came up with a committee, but if you look at schedule table one, that increase for the urban part has been increased from twenty-four million to thirty million. So those conversations probably need to have, be have, to be having with those lower-tier municipalities because I know from the Gray Highlands perspective, the the information I got that our staff weren't supporting it. But since then, there's been more money put to the table. So that's still communication. That still needs to go back to those particular five municipalities that I just read out that did have concerns of of the transfer. So it's it's a work in progress. But but that still needs to be carried on. So that's one part of of this in principle can be moving forward. But also, I bring that point also on the public information session, and we talked about this at the committee level, is and I think Director Hoy talked about this. There's some that would be in favor of this and some maybe won't be in favor. Some want to stay a municipal road, some may love the idea of going to, and vice versa. But there's also the issue around nine-one-one and your address. Because everybody's, if we change all those roads, there's the issue around your driver's license and your address. And I think that's the important part also through the public information session. So there's, there's a lot of things here. And and, you know, like I said, we just had comments on the O P eight twenty-three, and we're talking about our tree cutting by law. This is a big one. We need to get that. It doesn't say it can't continue on with the lower tiers. You have those conversations because, as I just read out, the first go around with the staff meeting with our lower tiers, there was a model. The model has changed since schedule one. They've, there's more money there. So those can continue on as well, and maybe you get more buy-in there as well. So you know, I just think this, you know, receiving in principle still allows it to keep moving forward, as as Deputy C A O says. There's a lot of stuff in here. I know not everybody's on that committee. Well, you know, I know all the reports are there, but there's a lot of stuff here, and it's a lot of hard work and a lot of stuff that's been going through this. And and yes, it's been Yes, it's been, I understand, well, there was the. Uh, Master Transportation Service Plan that came out in two thousand and fourteen. I realized afterward there was one prior to that. That's where it talked about concession, uh, twelve, uh, twelve, which I didn't know about, and then we more recently what's where we are today. So yes, it's been. In the works, but there's a lot of stuff there, and it one might beg the question why it never got done, because there's a lot of stuff here, so.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Counsel Boddy.
I'm sorry, sorry, Warden and and staff, but I'm I'm just looking at, um, at the motion itself, and I'm seeing. Received in principle, and I'm not sure if we want to receive it in principle or approve it in principle. But then if we're doing that, we're receiving it in principle, then, uh, we've got an and at the end of that second sentence, but then we are approving, um. Oh, now I see, wait a minute. I think we're approving, um. The budget and going ahead, so I'm not sure if we can receive it in principle and go ahead with the the second part. By by leaving the original motion in and then receiving in principle before that, if we're not, um. Going in two different directions and it 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 isn't consistent.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Boddy. Um, actually, the clerk has been doing a little, um, housekeeping in terms of the language to make it a viable motion, so I'll go to the clerk.
Thank you, and my understanding, um, is that Counsel McQueen's motion was to support the funding model in principle. And so we, as you were raising your question, we were just adjusting the wording on the screen, so it, I believe it now would reflect what Counsel McQueen's intent is.
Uh, Counsel Boddy, does that allow for the clarification that you were looking for?
Well, we either receive it or we approve it in principle. I don't think we receive it in principle, I think.
Okay, so to receive something does not necessarily mean that you're agreeing to it. The approval in principle means that you'd be approving it, uh, approving the essence of it. But the final stamp of approval is not yet done. So with that, I'll just ask for clarification from the mover to make sure that we're all clear what it is that we will be voting on.
So through you, Madam Warden, in my. Years of being around the table, receive in principle means you do receive it. In principle that you're supporting it in principle. Maybe I need to Google that word. But just to receive it doesn't mean, it just, you're just receiving it, and it doesn't mean receiving it in principle. You you're you're okay with it, but. The public information session, uh, the part about the budget is still, it it's for the budget, but it is is Counsel, uh. Green said it still has to go through a budget process, but it still allows it to move forward. Receive, just to receive it doesn't allow it to move forward. Receiving it in principle, I think allows it to keep moving forward.
Okay, that. Okay, if I may speak, please, Counsel McQueen, um. To receive does not mean that that you're approving. It means that you've heard it, you've read the report, you've received the information. Uh, what you are trying to identify is the in principle to, um, the about the funding model. So you can support in principle and you can approve in principle. Uh, but to receive is not to actually put a stamp on whether or not you agree with everything. It just says that you've acknowledged that it's come before you at the council table. So I think your in principle concept does belong correctly in this, in the second, the second session of what you are trying to say. Um, but, uh, it it does say receive in principle, and that's. To receive something is just to absorb the information. It's not to say, yes, let's go ahead with that information. But support in principle, perhaps that's the term you're looking for, I.
You didn't realize that that next sentence in there captured what I was trying to say was, uh, we approve and or we receive in print in principle. Approve in principle, then that just goes back to you're approving it again.
Um, no, as Chair, I'm going to say that when you put the in principle in, it says that that. You acknowledge what it is there, but you're not giving your final approval. Because you want something else to happen before you make that final approval. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, I think it's gonna be important that this gets read again. Again, I can't see it, so I'm gonna ask. For it to be read out so that we're very clear on what it is.
We're still on the amendment, so that it, um, the motion be amended to remove the words, um. Sorry, just one moment, I have to catch up on my notes here. So that the, um, motion be amended to insert the words in principle into the second clause of the motion regarding the funding model. And then insert the, um, that the public information sessions proceed.
Okay, thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. That does help us with highlighting the actual changes, uh, layered over top of the main motion. So we're still discussing the two items that are highlighted there. Any further discussion on that? Okay, I'm not seeing any further hands go up, so I'll call the vote on that particular amendment to the main motion. All those in favor? Okay, any opposed? Okay, so that motion carries. So we are now going to adjust the main motion. Okay, so what you see now on the screen is now what we will be considering to vote in its entirety, the way that it has been approved as amend, it it has been amended. So with that, we'll look for further discussion on the main motion. Counsel Greg.
Just a few things, uh, and through you, Warden. It was asked at the. Committee meeting, what is the forecasted increase in the tax levy? For two thousand and twenty-six, the response, I think, was six point five or six point six percent at this time. Uh, so that jet definitely justifies the concern about, uh, a one point five-six percent. Increase for just this one initiative on its own. Um. I won't comment about where that six and a half will land. Um. It was asked. As a result of the download of urban roads and abdicating our responsibility, uh, for managing that. Uh, can we corporately demonstrate that there'll be any reduction in terms of, um. Um, jobs or or, uh, roles here, uh, because there'll be more work picked up by the lower tier municipalities, um. At this time, it would appear that that's not the case, that we cannot demonstrate that there'll be a reduction in, um, in staffing needs at this level. Um, and the last question, I guess, is. From staff, what type of work then, um, with any changes here and information sessions, um. If council was to direct that, hey, the budget increase can be no more than three percent, and I'm just making that up. And the funding for this gets halved, or the funding for this gets withdrawn completely. Um, how staff can respond to that in terms of the draft agreements that were going out to lower tier municipalities? Yes, right at the very first meeting, the timeline was, uh, pre-election cycle. We want to keep it away from the election, from it being an election item. Uh, but as Director Hoy noted, it's it's advancing right into kind of election cycle. Um, and the time consideration is probably not the same as what it was when we started this. Uh, so those are my comments.
Okay, now I do have Director Spicer ready to speak in terms of that. I do need us to keep the context of the discussion just with what we have here. It is, it it's fruitful to consider that any decision down the road with the the last point that's on this, on this particular motion. Says that when we come to budget time, our draft budget, that's when we would be looking at this particular figure, so I appreciate the context. Of the budget, but for matters of today and what we're voting on, we're voting on whether or not we want to have that one point two, et cetera, million dollars go through into consideration for the draft. So that's the only decision, not whether or not we, uh, we, we are, we are firmly saying that needs to be in the twenty twenty-six budget. That's not what we're voting on. We're voting on whether or not it should be considered in the greater context of the budget of of the draft budget of twenty twenty-six. With that, let me go to Director Spicer.
Thank you, Madam Warden. When we prepared the twenty twenty-five budget, well, this is the first year that we showed a twenty twenty-six projected budget. And in that budget, we showed. That we would need a four-point-nine-seven percent increase based on what was determined to be the. Needs of the departments at the time the budget was prepared. That assumed a one million, uh, dollar growth. Um, and as a reminder, for twenty twenty-four, that was just over two million dollars. We have no idea what the growth is currently. It's too early in the year to project. As well as to understand the implications of what's going on with tariffs and inflation. Um, so there's a number of assumptions that are made in that twenty twenty-six projected budget that'll be continued to refine over the year. Um, that four point nine seven also doesn't, uh, reflect any tax ratio adjustments with On Sound and the multi-res. Um, when you layer on the one point five-six. Uh, levy increase resulting from the one million two hundred forty thousand nine hundred and one dollars. Um, the way it currently shakes out, that would be a six point five-three percent increase if everything held true as to what was in the proposed budget.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. Uh, we'll go to the Deputy C A O.
Just further to the comments and questions from from Counsel Greg with respect to staff changes. And as as noted through the report, as well as the presentation the pad indicated, um. We think majority of the municipalities based on our previous discussions would require the counties to continue to maintain those roads, especially during the winter. Um, so we think from a staff perspective, there there likely will be zero changes on, uh, with respect to that. Um, in fact, we may need to look at, uh, what that looks like overall based on some other, uh, changes from an overall just growth, uh, growth perspective. Um, as it relates to the roads agreements. Uh, obviously, our intent is to work with each of the municipalities to to work through those details. Um, and and we've had some great conversations already with each local municipalities. Um, right from the get-go, we've indicated that we're we're not, we don't want to leave any municipality with. You know, not being able to, uh, continue to maintain these roads, and so that's where, as Counsel McQueen indicated, the the urban. Based on the comments and feedback we heard from municipalities, uh, staff recommended changes to the urban transition model. Uh, and to increase those funding where the municipalities, where there was no rural road transfers to increase the. The rural road transfer, uh, or the urban transit, transition fund rate. Uh, for and keeping it consistent for the ten-year period. So we haven't presented that yet to the municipal staff. Uh, or to the municipalities, um, uh, we just presented that since Task Force last week. We wanted to get general support from this council before we have some of those further conversations, but that will be part of those discussions, and we hope that. That will resolve some of the concerns, at least that we've heard, and we know there's some further details that we need to work out. And, uh, and we're committed to doing so, uh, if if this motion were to pass by council today.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, any further questions or comments on this main motion? Counsel McQueen.
Just gonna read you a little article in the paper. Gray County will be hosting an open house for a public showing different options for, uh, upgrading a county road thirty-one between Rob Roy and the county line to correct. Safety concerns and make it easier to maintain. That was written thirty years ago. So it's something that we had in the practice of going to the public.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, there are no further comments, then we'll call the question. All those in favor? Oh. Okay, there's been a request for a recorded vote, Madam Clerk.
Counsel McKay. Counsel McKay is in favor. Counsel Carlton. Counsel Carlton is in favor. Counsel Pringle. Counsel Pringle is in favor. Counsel McQueen. Counsel McQueen in favor. Counsel Nielsen. Counsel Nielsen is opposed. Counsel Patterson is in favor. Counsel Dickert in favor. Counsel Kettner in favor. Counsel Keveney. Counsel Keveney in favor. Counsel Body in favor. Counsel Greg. In favor. Counsel Milne had to leave the meeting earlier. Counsel DeBreen is in favor. Warden Matrasovs in favor. Counsel Boarding Young.
In favor.
In favor. Alternate, uh, Doug Hutchinson. Is in favor and Counselor Hutchinson is in favor that motion or resolution carries eighty-three to five.
Okay, thank you very much, and thank you, uh, both to both staff, all staff members that contributed to the extra information on that. Okay, so that concludes our section seven, so that allows us to move back over to six A, which was pulled for. Um, pulled from the consent agenda, and it's recommended that the the resolution of the municipality Gray Highlands. Regarding affordable housing and home share programs be received for information. May I ask for a mover and a seconder to get that on the floor? Thank you. Moved by Counsel Nielsen, seconded by Counsel Pringle. And Counsel Nielsen, you were the one that requested to pull it, so I'll look to you first.
Thank you very much, Ward Matrasov. My apologies to everybody, because I know we're already running late. Um, our Greyhound Senior Advisory Committee made this request. I just wanted to let this committee know. I had a brief discussion with, uh, Director Shaw, Mary Shaw, regarding this, um, model, and she did discuss with me that. The county has watched some of the home share models that exist around, not just the Georgian Bay one. Um, they do present some challenges regarding risk and liability as the organizer. Uh, and that it would be difficult for the county to implement such a program. So I just wanted to let this body know that I'll bring that information back to Gray Highlands and to just receive this information. Thanks very much, Warden.
Okay, uh, thank you. Any further questions? No. Okay, in that case, then, all in favor? And that motion is carried. Thank you. Oh. Uh, Counsel Pringle seconded. Counsel Nielsen had moved. Okay, so that motion passes. Next, we'll go to item eight, which is our closed session matters, and it's recommended that the committee, the whole, does now go into closed session pursuant to. Section two thirty-nine, two of the Municipal Act two thousand and one, as amended to discuss. Proposed or pending acquisition or disposition of land in municipality to items being a land disposition and land acquisitions for road widening purposes. May I ask for a mover? Thank you. Moved by Counsel McKay, seconded by Counsel Hutch- Hutchinson, original. And, uh, all those in favor?